All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna call to order.
Quiet, quiet.
I know. Can everybody hear me outside the?
Not really.
Okay.
They're always talking out there.
Yeah.
If we could please be quiet in the hallway. We're calling a meeting to order. Thank you.
Get the big dog out there, the big voice. Because it doesn't seem like mine's even on. That's okay. So it takes a little bit to calm down a bunch of folks. Sure are glad you're here. And I'm gonna call to order and we're gonna stand and pledge allegiance. Please, join with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get to public comments, we're gonna have amendment and approval of the agenda. And then, just as you gotta like...
Do you turn the speakers out loud?
They're on. They're just not real good, Dan.
Yeah, those speakers out there just don't work real well.
Yeah.
So we will do our best to talk loud. We have the volume up all the way, I assume. Okay, thank you.
The volume is up all the way out there, sorry.
So I know it's tough, but if you're super quiet, you might be able to hear. But just apologize that we don't have a huge hearing room. And but I sure appreciate everybody's commitment to be here and to join in. So first of all, we did the pledge allegiance, called to order, we'll do the amendment, approval of the agenda.
I have one amendment.
Okay.
Actually, two amendments, sir. On the six, I'd like to add G. And that is to discuss an appointment due to a vacancy on the Budget Committee.
Okay, budget.
And then, an executive session. We're going to need to already contact the council about this. Want to give some information, talk about the college and the public postings, so.
So where was that one?
Echoes an executive session.
Okay, executive, okay. Court, anything?
Well, actually, I have a few, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Five C, I want a poll for discussion. Five F and six C.
Okay, hold it. Now let's go five C.
Five F.
Pull that.
And six C.
Six C.
Minor, but we need to pull them and discuss because those are in consent agenda. Also, Mr. Chair, if you, I've postponed...
Well, six C, we could discuss. I mean, it's without pulling it.
Excuse me, that's right.
It's a discussion action item, so.
Thank you.
We can discuss that.
So I'm also pulling our two presentations today, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You know, we put these in a week ahead, and so a lot can change in a week. And so I don't know if we're gonna have the time to set it up for 9:30. That's the Water Resources presentation with Jake Johnstone and two of his staff. Very important, we'll table that till the next meeting. And let's see, the other one is the American Rescue Plan with United Way, Jen Schaefer and her staff. We'll postpone that as well. That would probably would have taken a half hour this morning, so I don't think we would have that time. That's all I have, thank you.
There is one more, sir.
All right.
Four C, the other presentation, Brad Ricker.
Brad Ricker is not here today, so.
Is not here, so we're gonna take that off the agenda.
You cross that off, so.
We're getting a shorter meeting, aren't we?
Yeah, it's, well...
And I have one more. I wanna also, the added consent agenda, the Curry County Dispatch System Supplement, I want to pull that as well. Just for a quick discussion.
Well, let's just move it to discussion items, then.
Perfect.
Right, so five C would be six...
No, five G.
Well, we're going C, F, and G. So C would be, or five C would be six H. Five F would be six I, and five G would be six K.
Okay, so I'll just ask for your assistance when we come to those to bring that to the attention of the chair.
And I have one more. I'd like to make a two-minute statement on the Ofer Housing Project Proposal before public comment, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Well, and right before, right as that, we get to that, we're right there, right now. After we do a motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll move, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Council has some...
I just wanted to add to the consent calendar, a letter from the board that's outlining how the Parks Department's gonna be run between veterans and juvenile.
Okay. In consent or discussion action?
Consent, unless you guys want to talk about it.
No, we need to add in action items. Discussion.
Discussion, action.
Please.
So that'll be K, then.
Okay. So we got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, here, thank you.
Motion carries three to zero. Okay, so next on the agenda is the public comments.
If I could go first?
Well, I know, but just real quick, I'm gonna make a statement. So I think everybody's here because they got something in the mail, not just to see our...
Speaker right here, Mike.
I think you're all here because, yeah, there we go.
And the crowd goes wild.
How about if I pin this on my nose? Maybe that'll give you... I think you're here because you got something in the mail, and as I did also. And so I think as a board, we'd like to make a statement, each of us individually, concerning that, and might put a lot of folkses at ease and maybe even cut down on our public comment time. So I'm gonna open that up right now to Commissioner Boyce first, and then we'll do Chris Passion and myself. And so maybe even do what I'm doing in court, as far as just speaking right into that thing.
That was my volume. I see a lot of heads going back sideways. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Boy, am I grateful with the amount of correspondence and input we've had from citizens. And do we ever need citizen involvement and participation these days? All walks of life. One lady called this morning and said, "You know, I think that card abused you commissioners that went out in the mail." And I said, "That's okay, we get abused a lot." So in the last five business days, we've received over 200 emails or calls. The overwhelming responses were a solid no to the Ofer project, the housing homeless project. Few of those, as they shared their thoughts, were indifferent to the less fortunate. So I want to state, though, and I think everybody in here agrees, we all have a right and a responsibility to protect our way of life. Board, I believe you agree, any housing funds that this county can be responsible for should go to workforce and veterans housing, number one. In my view, this whole thing is about country values, traditions, and virtues compared to the tragedies of city and metro decay that we see around our country and the whole world. The point is this, this is on our watch. The people have spoken. We need to do our job, vote today, and send everybody home. Counsel, Pope, even though we didn't officially notice this vote, the public has been properly and well-informed, and I believe we can act today under OTHER, which is O-R-S, 192.640, and be within the public responsibilities of notification. So Board, I hope you're ready to vote on this important issue now. I'm ready to make a motion after you two speak. Thank you.
I would like to echo a lot of what Commissioner Boyce just said. I believe that, you know, initially, our country started with a welfare system for women and families because of loss of their husbands in war zones. And people became indigent, and the government stepped up and tried to find ways to fix a lot of that. And I think over the decades, and now almost a century later, there's been a lot of people that have found very good ways to manipulate that process. I personally believe that we need to take care of people that cannot take care of themselves. I do not believe that doing this project is the way to do that. I believe, and I am currently working with this board and with our planning department, to provide housing for our veterans, for workforce, everyday working families, and our elderly citizens and people that are low income, to find low-income housing. Because as a lot of us know, we have mothers and fathers that are seniors now that can't afford an apartment in this county anymore because everything is so overpriced. My father-in-law makes $1,200 a month in from his pension, and you can't find an apartment for $1,200, much less pay all the other bills as well. So those are the kind of things that this board is working hard to find, and I think if we were gonna use this money for housing, that's the kind of housing we would look to do. I'm sure that other counties surrounding us would love to see us open a facility like this, because I would guarantee you, they will have their buses loaded and bring them right on over. And again, there are people who deserve help. We don't have mental health services in this county. We don't have public health services in this county to handle this kind of thing. So it would overwhelm the Sheriff's Department, it would overwhelm the cities and their councils. And so I appreciate everyone being here. I appreciate your voice and you speaking out to those who are for it and against it. That's what a democracy is all about. The voice in this room, the voice in this county that we've answered in the last week is a absolute no. So I will, I will... I will echo Commissioner Boyce's ask for a motion on this, and we can hopefully put an end to this now.
Well, I was just gonna echo that same sentiment, and without a whole lot of tears, I'll just tell you that it's personal to me. Thirty-three-year-old son, meth addict, meth addict, in prison right now. I've tried. I've been a homeless coalition. My wife and I have been the homeless coalition. At our house, I built a room in a garage for my son. When he's doing drugs, that room, it gets destroyed. And so the transition from jail to drugs, he's okay until he starts those drugs. As soon as he starts doing his meth again, it's not Michael. And no amount of giving is gonna change that. It's his choice. Every one of us in this room today and in the hallway made a choice who we're gonna serve. Every one of us. And to go back to an old song by Bob Dylan, "You're gonna serve somebody, might be the devil and might be the lord, but you're gonna serve somebody." And I've tried and tried and tried, and this young man is 33 years old, gets out of jail next month. And he's making a, he's making a change, he says, but it's his choice. Years and years ago, I chewed Copenhagen. I was an idiot. Still am, just an old idiot. But I made a choice one day. I promised my mom I would quit chewing Copenhagen, and I did. It wasn't a disease, it was a choice. It was, I was addicted, but it was a choice I made to quit doing that. And I feel bad for these folks, because I've had them in my house, come to see my son and stuff, and so, but they have to make a choice to stop doing what they're doing. I'm not in favor of safe injection sites, needle exchange, all that stuff. We had a workshop on this last month. I'm not in favor of that, because that's celebrating mediocrity. You don't... I'm on a soapbox here, and I apologize, but, so I echo just what our other two commissioners said. There's a way to do this, and I'll just put it out there, I'm a faith-based guy. We had a gospel mission years ago in Harbor, and it worked. But there are rules and regulations that you have to go by. I've talked to Sheriff Ward, he's opposed to this also, in the fact that we're getting away from punishment and we're rewarding bad behavior. And not that all these folks need to be punished, but if you're doing drugs and you're stealing from your folks and your neighbors and whoever, that is wrong. That is so wrong. So thank you all for being here, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, after that, would you mind if we had a moment of silence, just to be aware of those people that are in addictions? Just kinda let the Lord fill this room. I hope that doesn't offend anyone. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm gonna listen to that again, we'll get it on recording. That was outstanding. Both of you, thank you very much. So Board, I'm gonna move that the Curry County, Oregon Board of Commissioners appropriate no county funds or American Rescue Plan funds to or for the Ofer school or any housing project specifically related to homeless. That's all I have, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, folks, if you still want to make a public comment... If you still want to make a public comment, you can, but we have... Okay, come on up, sir. Yep, Beth Barker, yep.
You probably oughta go on your list. I'm gonna be very quick. My name is Joe Wilson, as you know.
Okay, hi, Joe.
And I want to congratulate you for what you've done today. My sister works for a senator in Virginia, and she told me the biggest difference in Virginia today...
Time out. We're gonna have trouble hearing him, and the people that have tuned in are gonna have trouble hearing him.
One second.
Please.
The, she told me the biggest difference in Virginia is that people showed up. And lady and ladies and gentlemen, we showed up today.
Yeah.
And we made a difference, just like what was made when this country was started. One thing I wanted to mention that you haven't mentioned, and that's the small businesses. I really feel like they were hurt by this COVID, and I really feel like that should also, I agree with the veterans. I believe with the housing for the working poor. But I also feel like there should be an effort made to support the small businesses that have survived the COVID, and even the new businesses that are opening. I think that's very important, and that should be one of your priorities. So my, you know, people have asked me, "Why did I send that flyer out?" Well, I went to my wife and I said, "You know, we came here because it wasn't invaded by the homeless. This is a place we want to live our life out." And it would be a lot cheaper putting that flyer out than moving. Thank you very much.
Pull your microphone down so we can hear you, please. There's one on your right, too. Thank you, Beth.
Curry County Board of Commissioners, I'm Beth Barker Hidalgo, the Director of the Curry County Homeless Coalition. I have yet another letter of support from Advanced Health that hit my inbox this morning for the Ofer School project. Advanced Health, United Way, Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, and the State Department of Human Services have all sent letters of support for this project. And I will give you those letters of support now, although I know I've emailed them to you all. And I believe that every one of these organizations represents at least 10 of these people here in opposition. Understand that this is a done deal when it comes to the American Rescue Plan dollars, but it's not a done deal for Curry County. Chair Herzog, I heard a member of our community tell you just this morning that in about a year's time, municipalities will have a responsibility, a legal responsibility, to provide housing for people in your community, all people. Let me just tell you about the husband and wife, an infant, two-month-old child, that we're putting in winter warming in a motel. She works at the mill. We are housing working families. It's not just about drugs. And y'all, none of you up there have the credentials to make a decision about whether or not it's a choice. None of you. Okay? So thank you very much.
I'd like to make a comment to that.
I think you're right, too. So this is part of the process.
Okay, folks.
Okay. Let's be respectful and...
I just want to say I do not have the credentials, but I will say that I do my share in this county to house people that are indigent and have some problems. I think a lot of people in this county reach out and help. What I want to say is, of course, all these agencies want to approve a homeless place in this county, because they all want to get rid of their homeless. So as soon as they approve them, they're gonna say, "Now, we've got a place for you in Curry County. Send them on over."
But all you, you're homeowners, without a safe life and space, you're all welcome. Welcome to Curry.
And Beth, we're not against, we're not opposed, Beth, to that lady and her husband. No, that's not what we're talking about.
There's more than one. There's way more than one. Working families cannot afford to live here. And I see people, let's go, to social media and say, "We can't afford to live here, we..." Who's gonna clean the toilets in the motel rooms in the back of the house for a mess?
Time out, guys.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Just introduce your...
Okay, thank you, sir. My name is Patrick McArthur, and I live here in Gold Beach. And thank you for your time.
You bet.
I'd like to say that homelessness is not a housing crisis. Homelessness is a result of a long train of bad decisions. The decision to abuse your body with drugs and alcohol. The decision to reject the care and support of your family. The decision to reject the teachings of the churches that feed you. The homeless simply hold our, hold in contempt our values, the statements of our life, they hold in contempt the laws that the rest of us live by. And the laws of this county is the consciousness of this county. Its elected Democratic representatives represent the people of this county. That's what we put into our law. And people respect our law who are law-abiding citizens. That's why we do not scream profanities on the street at one another, because we respect the dignity of others. That's why we stop at red lights, even though we're in a hurry, because we respect the safety and the lives of others. That's why we do not throw trash in our streets, because we care for our neighbors, our community, and our children. We get none of this respect and care from the homeless. None. Giving a drunk a bottle of whiskey is not compassion. Giving a drug addict another hit is not compassion. And giving free people, giving people free places to live while they hold us in contempt is not compassion. It's foolishness. It's tilting at windmills. As you've mentioned, we can't solve the prices, we can't solve homelessness in Curry County because it is a national problem. And there's no reason for us to take our little oasis of peace and serenity here and contaminate it with what is ruining San Francisco and New York and LA. San Francisco spent $106,000 per person last year. $106,000 per individual homeless person last year. They solved the problem. LA spent $85,000 last year on each homeless person. They just solved the problem. So how would we solve the problem of homelessness with a one-time grant when all these major cities with all their magnificent resources can't? They got billions of dollars, they got doctors, they got psychics, they got everybody working on a project, but they're not working on the cause of the project. The cause of the project is simply that some Americans refuse to accept the laws and customs and values that we live by. This is illustrated perfectly by the fact that undocumented immigrants come across our border, and they walk and they hitchhike under, without knowing our language, without knowing our customs. They come up here and they get one or two jobs, they sleep on somebody's floor, and they stay within the law. If illegal immigrants that don't speak our language and don't have our culture can do this, that demonstrates perfectly that the people who are sleeping on our streets today have made their own choice. Because the people from Mexico are in the kitchen watching the dishes, they're serving us at our tables, they're putting our roofs on our houses. They're not laying on the streets begging us for money for alcohol and drugs. Putting, putting an institution into this county that would encourage the homeless and their enablers is just that. It is simply enabling a choice of lifestyle that they have willingly, freely made. And so since we cannot coerce their choices, we can simply enforce our own laws. Our camping laws, our sanitation laws, our public decency laws, drinking alcohol in public laws, stealing laws, you know, just enforce our laws. That's all we have to do to provide it. So thank you for your time, commissioners and citizens. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Jean Sodeman. Jean Chaney Chaney Sodeman of Brookings. I have been an international journalist for many years with Radio Liberty, a Christian radio station by Dr. Stanley Montez, and I have watched how the world has changed. What you were about to vote for was the international agenda of the Communist International. The entity pushing the homeless housing agenda is All Care Health. This is a certified B corporation, benefit corporation, and the Board of Directors and the company officials must sign a loyalty oath to the United Nations. Not to the government of the United States of America, but to the United Nations. That is the Declaration of Interdependence. It's not independence, it's interdependence. It's three letters, T-E-R, interdependence. With all the attachments of Agenda 21, Agenda 30, Sustainable Development, and Smart Growth, which was created by the global elite, Rockefeller funded the initial Model B Benefit Corporation legislation. The advisor to All Care Health is Beth Barker Igaldo. Did you just hear what she said? She represents the United Nations, not the government of the United States of America. She is the Chair of the Curry Homeless Coalition. The homeless issue also goes back to the United Nations Habitat III Human Settlement Meeting in 2016. One of the goals was the right to housing. And coming from Santa Cruz County, this is their agenda and what you would like to implement today in this red book that I attended 25 years ago. Why are the people at the Brookings Homeless negotiating table pushing the United Nations agenda? The United States of America is a sovereign nation.
Amen.
And not a cog in the despotic Marxist United Nations machine. It is time to say no more and dissolve the homeless task force that has the underpinnings of the United Nations. There is one commissioner here that has been pushing this, and I have watched him and read his comments. And I have watched him and read his comments in the Pilot Newspaper. That is Court Boyce. He is the one pushing the United Nations. I have seen this type of personality in the United Nations. Sweet talk to the, um, to the people of which he represents. He doesn't represent the local people. He represents the United Nations. And that goes along with no more private housing and no more religion like the Christian religion. Shame on you, Commissioner Boyce.
Well, if I may respond, first of all, I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna give a little shout-out to Beth Barker Haddogal. I've got to know her over the last five years to say that she's a communist, uh, when I've seen her heart and the results of what she has done for people in need. She just gave one example. I could give this group several examples in helping the people in need. When it comes to Agenda 21, the United Nations, I'll, I'll go to, I'll discuss with you anytime, United States Constitution, and my support for that. I'll discuss with you anytime, the little blue helmets from the United Nations. I have no idea why you would make such a bizarre statement based on what I've said, ma'am, in the Pilot. So that is absolutely... Okay, so that's, uh, to, to connect that with the United Nations, you know, my history is absolutely the opposite of that. And sure, I'm shocked, but like I said, the first part of this meeting, we get abused once in a while. That's what we're here for, to take the, to take it on the chin. And those that are on the fringe that don't have the facts and make such an awful statement, my gosh, I, I'm just, uh, I'm beyond words. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for that time. And, uh, I'm, uh, I'm glad to have that public comment.
Okay. So we, we are gonna continue with public comments. There will be time for anybody to make a public comment, but if, you know, as, as we already voted, we, and if you still want to make a public comment, that's, that's perfectly okay. And you will be able to be, uh, make a comment on other issues. That, there was a little note that I got. So, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Joy May. I live up in Port Orford, but I spend a lot of time in all of the communities on the coast. Unfortunately, I believe, once again, this, our county commissioners have made a decision based on fear and emotions and feelings rather on research and facts. There is a, and I also understood, you know, I, I understood we had three minutes for public comments and that it would be respected in this chamber. So I would hope that that is held to. There is a mountain of evidence, should you like to research it, that shows the benefits of supportive housing. It benefits the community, which what seems to be most people are concerned with here. Not our fellow human beings, but our community as we believe it exists. There's a mountain of research that shows that expenses for health, law enforcement, educational services, most things you could look at that produce a positive functioning community. Expenses towards those services are reduced when supportive housing is established in a community. It is also a myth, and research shows this, that more homeless move into a community when those services are provided. There are, year after year, there are counts of the homeless. Year after year, it shows that those people will tell you, those people, here I am. I'm, I'm so upset I'm using those words. That people who find themselves in those circumstances will tell you the last time they had stable housing was in the exact community that they are now homeless in. Therefore, they are not people coming from other cities. They are our neighbors and fellow community members who now, because of circumstances in their lives, and I could cite you hundreds, thousands of examples from my 20-plus-year work in the Head Start Program of families who find themselves in circumstances, not because of choices that they made. I'm assuming the buzzer is the two minutes or the three minutes. Thank you for your time. I am appalled at lumping people who find themselves unhoused as criminals and drug addicts. I am appalled at that in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ma'am, when, when the yellow light goes off, that means you have 30 seconds, if that helps. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Juliana Reaser. I'm from Harbor. My reason for wanting to speak is I do believe there should be consideration. As you know, the Curry County debt is close to $2 million. And we've been borrowing or taking money from the road fund every year. And that really should not be happening. I would suggest that we consider a grant writer who's not a novice, but a professional grant writer who has the skills for results. There are so many opportunities out there to obtain funding for our county. But we need somebody with the skill to write the grants to get the funding. This could be used for nonprofits as well, beyond our own needs here. So this is my suggestion, and I do hope this will be considered. It's very, very much needed. There are so many opportunities that are being passed up, and we need to get on with it. We need to be more professional, not boilerplates, but get some funding for this county. No more using the road fund. Can I hear an amen?
Amen.
All right, and we could use the American ARP funding for this. Some of it would be good, because then the nonprofits could also use a grant writer. Do you know what I mean? We have to get going. We have to get this county out of debt. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Juliana Reaser, R-E-A-S-O-R.
Thank you, ma'am.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Just a month ago, I had a, um, agenda item before the board on road fund reserves, capping it at a, at $20 million. Twice I brought that up and presented to the board, and it has not yet got traction. So I'm with you, ma'am, on that issue. The second thing is, um, with grant writing, three times I've failed with the past three previous boards. With the amount of foundations that are in the state of Oregon, Oregon Community Foundation, the Al Pierce Lumber Company, uh, Wild Rivers Coast, uh, all of them. The, uh, the Toala Denai Tribe in Northern Dale Nord and Southern Coos. I mean, there's so many foundations. I don't know why that I couldn't get this through the board. I'm gonna keep trying. Smart counties manage well, and they, they have grant writers. We have not been able to get that done here. Thank you. It's been a source of frustration too, by the way.
There you go, bud. You're up.
Uh, good morning, commissioners and audience. Anyway, I want to thank you, the commissioners, for this time. And, oh, Daniel Ju. Sorry. Anyway, I appreciate what you guys are doing. You, you have some logic left in our culture. It's, it's amazing. Uh, I would encourage you to run for Washington now, maybe. Okay, um, first of all, I do support the homeless. However, I believe in the old philosophy, teach the person how to fish, not just give them a fish. And I've worked with Narcotics Anonymous, Alcohol Anonymous, so I know what those people want and need. First of all, your homeless, probably a third of them, statistics show that they choose that lifestyle. Therefore, if you were to ask them, "Did you want to be a homeless person when you grew up?" Well, you made it. Then that eliminates that segment of the population. Then you have the ones that are mentally ill. And then you have the ones that are addiction. These funds probably won't be able to use for rehabilitation, correct? So, anyway, I look at helping these people, but they need to help themselves. What about self-respect? Nobody has any self-respect anymore. How about self-dignity? You know, "Oh, well, give them a handout. Give them a, yeah." I believe in a handout, but not a handout, sorry.
Hand up.
Hand up. And I think, uh, I don't know what's happened to our culture. It's kind of gone Looney Tunes. It's, uh, First Thessalonians, I think, says, "If a person is unwilling to work, he doesn't eat." So... And I think there's, if you're disabled and you can, or you're low income, yeah, we'll help you. But you're enabling a person, and I don't think people understand that. I've taught for over 40 years. And I try to teach my students to make good decisions, to become independent. Independent thinkers and so forth. Uh, I don't think you're helping these people when you're just handing out things to them. Rehabilitation, yes. Then get them back on the road. But anyway, gentlemen, I want to thank you for all you've done. I just want to add one more thing. I guess the, our governor has released over 1,000 prisoners last year, so I don't know if you can file a lawsuit against that. I know there's been lawsuits done. I mean, she's not fulfilling her role as, you know, sa- safety and, you know, law and order. It, it's amazing. I don't, I don't understand. Anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Daniel. So, anybody who wants to speak, we're not gonna go by all these. Just come up to the, get on that end and, and come that way, 'cause I think some people have left, but, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, Nancy Chester. Um, I appreciate you. I'm gonna be really short.
Fine.
I appreciate your, your vote on, on not allowing, I'm assuming, the AR...
ARP?
Yeah, funds. Um, the homeless coalition, is that, that is a county, um, entity, is it not?
No.
It is not.
Okay, so, the issue is, and I, and I'm thinking, I worked in planning for 15 years, so I'm assuming that they could independently still purchase that property as an individual entity with some funding from who knows where, um, and they could still get that property. It would have to go through conditional use. It's zoned RCR, Rural Community Residential. My issue is, is the surrounding properties there, there's only one other property directly north, which is also RCR. It's two acres. The property that they're looking at at Ofer School is 7.39. The other property is only 2.34 acres. He purchased it for $305,000. Real market value right now is 610, and it is gonna go straight to you-know-where in a handbasket if this turns into what is being proposed. The issue with that is, I've seen it. I lived in the Bay Area. I know what these homeless and handing, to give people a handout, the needle exchange, the safe injection sites, it's all garbage. It is just gonna bring in more people that we don't want in our community. We want to help our community. Absolutely, I want to help the community. But I'm certainly not gonna be for redoing, rezoning, redoing whatever needs to be done out at the Ofer School or any other area for that matter. We don't have the police protection for that, which it's gonna bring. We don't have the hospital needs for mental. We don't have any of that. Why are we bringing that to here? The low-income housing? Yes, go for it. If there's a way we can do it, yes, I want to see it. This, I do not want to see. I don't want to see people's properties just go skyrocketing down. They're right in that immediate area. The rest is all forest grazing, except going down to Tamco. I believe that's commercial, almost positive.
Yep.
But it's all forest grazing and that one property, the guy, and I think he lives here. I did some research. It shows on the records that he lives in, I believe, Portland. But then when I did a little bit more research, it shows Gold Beach. I have not got ahold of him yet. I don't even know if he's aware of what's going on out there. So I do support low-income helping. I do not want to give out a free ticket, a free pass for anything. I busted my rear end too long, just like everybody else has here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nancy? If you could call me later, I want to talk to you about some of the things you were just talking about and give you some information.
Okay, thanks.
Next, Lori.
Hi. Thank you all very much for letting us speak. Um, I'm here on a little more brighter note, so I'm gonna diverge from the hot topic here. Oh, Lori Van Zant, thank you. And, um, first, I just want to thank the commissioners. You all spoke from your heart. It really, your, your passion for this county is very obvious and really appreciated, all three of you. And this little guy over here is awesome, John and Anthony. Thank you. So, um...
Couldn't do without him.
Yes, exactly. So, um, with that said, I'm just here to do a two-minute brag on Gold Beach Main Street. We're the people that's got the benches. We've got, I don't know how many benches. We have 47 trees. Our arborist, Tim, is sitting right here. We had Sharon Gwen out in the lobby. She's our artist that does our thank-you cards and all kinds of wonderful things for us. Did our logo for Underground Power. We have Julie that was out there that's a donor every year. So our momentum as Gold Beach Main Street is really growing. And our goal is to really make our town inviting, so people want to stop. So we've been in existence for five years. Can you imagine seven women getting along for five years?
It's a miracle.
It's biblical.
It's a, it's a miracle. And I must tell you, we are all hardworking, supportive. We know when to let go of things, just like you, you folks do. We let go of things. We don't always get what we want, but we work hard toward the end goal. And our end goal is Gold Beach Main Street. And what can we do to increase tourism, increase residents? While you work on housing, we're gonna work on this.
Okay.
So, um, with that said, we have just, um, said goodbye sadly to Lindsay Dixon, who was our community coordinator. And we now have, are very excited to introduce Anna Marie Curtis. Anna, Anna. So Anna has a, a ton of experience in nonprofits. She gets me. She knows I'm all over the board, and she tames me down and keeps me focused. We're very lucky to have her. And the funding for this position, I'm proud to say, comes from Urban Renewal Dollars. Thank you to the Urban Renewal Agency in the city. It comes from, um, Max Kelly, who used to be an anonymous donor, which now openly donates and loves this town. Flies in his jet, looks at what's going on, gives money, very supportive. And lastly, Ford Foundation has really stepped up to the plate with two years of funding, including all benefits for Anna. So we are the real deal now, paying almost a living wage. Someday, Anna, someday. So, speaking of grants, you know, if you ever want to work with us with grants, we're all over it. And, uh, it is your future. It's a wonderful idea. So anyway, thank you so much for how much you do support us. And we're here to stay and we're here to make a difference. So thanks.
How about a round of applause for Gold Beach Main Street? Are, are you in line, sir? Tom, Tom Whitehead.
Oh, yeah, hey.
Welcome. Been a long time.
There's a young lady out there that's, uh, has a disability, and she's, she would like to speak. She was scheduled to speak before I, I am.
Is that Mary?
May I take the microphone out to her? You can see her right out there.
Yeah, yep. Okay. No, just, Mary, Mary, can she, can, come on up, Mary. Go ahead and put that back in there, Tom. I think she'll... She's a professional at this, really. She knows how to do it better than all of us.
Alrighty.
So, um, before I start, do you guys know that this is not being video recorded? Eric's not here. Miranda's not here.
Eric's here.
He's in the room.
He's in the room.
Well, I went and I checked with a couple people, and apparently there's no video record of this.
Well, that doesn't break my heart, but, um...
I just wondered, you know, if...
I think we're, I think we're doing every, it's being recorded somehow, right, Eric?
Eric says that we're good.
Okay, okay. It's not going out for some reason.
Guys, excuse me, in the back, please, we're, thank you.
So, also, before I start, Commissioner Boyce, I noticed when you talked about being in favor of workforce housing and veterans' housing, I hope that you are still also in favor of housing for senior citizens whose waiting lists are two to three times as long as any other waiting list for any other type of person. I hope that's still the case. I'm Mary Rowe. I'm here to give you more information about the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, or ADA requirement for jurisdictions with fifty or more employees to have an ADA transitional plan. At the last B O C general meeting, I explained that such a plan was required for Curry County Government as of 1995. The press release that Chief Deputy County Clerk Shelley Denny provided showed that Curry County Government was modifying our buildings in 1992. The procedures required have not occurred in recent years, however. The ADA plan must be updated every five years and public comments about it encouraged. There also must be a certified ADA coordinator overseeing such a plan, and the plan must address the removal of all kinds of barriers to access by those experiencing disabilities, not just changes in infrastructure. I learned this after contacting Sabine Reer, who con, who contracts with the Northwest ADA Center from the satellite office in Portland. She is a technical assistant specialist there. She explained that the ADA Act of 1990 requires that we have an ADA coordinator in our county government, either as a separate person or as one of the responsibilities of another titled staff position. This person must undergo extensive virtual training and then be certified. This ADA coordinator also establishes protocol for ADA requests, grievances, and rectifying complaints. All of this can be confirmed by the Northwest ADA Center in Washington. County Council Pope, I am asking if you will follow up on our being in compliance with the ADA by confirming the need for these requirements with the Northwest ADA Center and then oversee their implementation, and that the additional ADA training that I requested be scheduled soon. It has been a year since I requested such training, and only one half-hour virtual training has occurred. So, I'm asking you, County Council Pope, if you could please follow up on that?
I saw a head nod.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I, Tom Whitehead, you, you're on, you got a...
Thanks, John, it's been a long time since I...
Cape Blanco Road, Sixes, Oregon.
You got it. You still remember me. I can't believe it. Anyway, hey, you know, I'm here to speak in favor of this, of the project here, the homeless. And, you know, we've heard, I've heard a little bit about, you know, how homeless are mentally ill and alcoholics and choose to be that way. You know, it's a choice between limited options, let's say that. You know, if you, if you, I mean, homeless people can't choose to live in a mansion, okay? Sometimes they don't even have enough money for, for an apartment. You know, eight hundred bucks a month rent, first to last, and cleaning deposit, and all that stuff, you know? It's, it's hard for somebody to come here and, and, but, you know, we need people here that, that'll work, and you guys need it, because you, you know, have, have houses and things like that, and you want the lawns kept, and you want to go out to eat, and you want somebody to bring you a plate or whatever it is, and, and, you know, so, you know, you need people that'll make that transition, and, and I, I think this is a good way to start. And, you know, if you, I'll be honest with you guys, if you want to look at the face of homelessness, look here, right at me. You know, thirty years ago, I came here, thirty, well, in eighty-five, I guess that's more than thirty-five years ago, and I was living in my van for a while, I was commercial fishing, and then I rented an old place out on Cape Blanco Road. That's where I met John, he delivered to me on occasion. And, you know, and eventually I bought the place and got a little, you know, a little bit ahead, and, and so... And I know several other people that have done that. Another couple lives in Port Orford, and they've done that. And, you know, not everybody is homeless, is a, you know, a stoner, a loser, an alcoholic, or, you know, made the choice. So, I guess that's pretty much all I got to say, and I hope you, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else would like to speak, any subject? Yes, sir, you've been waiting, go ahead.
I just want to speak about the homeless and Jaime Lopez. And one thing that has been forgotten, got to be tracked, some of the homeless, because few of them, they just been stealing, vandalizing. I already bring some proofs to John and Anthony, I show him proofs. So, I hope something have to be done and more responsible with the laws, because I have seen a lot of irresponsibility on this county, starting with the heads up. That's why I come to give this word, need more responsibility, because there is bunch of crooks and got to be tracked, some of the homeless, they been stealing, vandalizing, more responsibility. And thank you for don't allow more people on this county, because it's already full of trash.
Thank you, Jaime.
Do I just start speaking?
Well, you can pull that down a little bit, and, so, yeah, there you go.
All right, I am Gail Holtsley Chandler, and I live at Langlois. And I want to, I'm saying that I am representing myself as a property owner and three other household property owners. And I would like to have the county consider where these funds that are going to be needed for this project, which you have already nixed, but there's going to be others pressures on you. Remember that we are property owners, we are paying the taxes, and I can foresee that if the county continues taking on projects that in, will increase funding needs in the future, that taxes will go up, and we will be taxed out of our homes. So, I think this is a consideration that concerns me. And thank you for your service. I know it's no joke to be in your position.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, anybody who would like to speak? You bet, bud.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mark St. James from Harbor. You know, I applaud you for voting on this, because that was part of my talk. We wouldn't have been here the nineteenth or today if this, this art proposal hadn't been allowed to gain so much traction. It's wasted a lot of your time and our times. And I want to let you know, we know that these funds don't have to be allocated until 2024. And they don't have, and once they're allocated, they don't have to be spent until 2026. So, we're still going to be vigilant and watching what's on the proposals, especially stuff by our paid Curry employee, Beth Barker Hidalgo. I ask why we can't see that it's not a conflict of interest. The last lady, one of the ladies spoke on all the chairs and the positions she holds, and is going around pushing this that you just voted down. Again, I thank you for that. But it was a big conflict interest. And if she pulls, pushes anything else, I'm hearing that she's talking about a needle-syringe exchange program. So, it just, it just keeps them coming here, keeps them, it's handouts, not handups. And I, it, I'm concerned. You know, I represent a lot of people in Brookings. It's been brought to my attention that a certain Curry County employee, last year and this year, is going out of her way to register the homeless for the census in Curry County, also to register the homeless to vote. So, what legal, legitimate, physical address are they being registered under? And if they have an address like that, that wouldn't consider them homeless. Are they using a P O box like some of the other counties are? One, hundreds of people under a P O box so they can vote? That's one of our concerns. Again, we, the lady just talked about our properties and taxes. It's a no-brainer that Curry County gets about roughly twenty-seven million dollars a year from, from the whole pie, taxes and, and the pot shops and everything, but a lot of it is our property taxes. You decrease our property taxes by bringing any future proposals in like this for the homeless, giving them preference, when we got other issues that should weigh in more than homeless. You're going to decrease our property taxes, then there's less taxes for Curry County to deal with. And some of the real issues is, I know this monies, these funds are specifically earmarked for a lot of COVID-19 related, but we, we need a new county jail. There must be ways to undo the districts. I mean, nonessential, five nonessential library districts getting more taxes than our sheriff's department? We got three school districts that are spun off, they get more taxes than our sheriff's department? That's just one excuse, one example. We got county water system that needs to be redone, it's sucking in salt water all the time. It did last year. So, I'm just here to say, we're going to pay attention to where these funds are allowed, allocated in the next two years. And I admire you guys. I couldn't do this job, I've been asked to do this job. You guys, I admire you, and I thank you. But let's not enable the homeless. There's bigger, there's bigger fish out there to deal with. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you. Okay. We, we'll do... Tim, we'll do you, and then we'll take a ten-minute break.
Okay, hey, Tim Scullin, Gold Beach, Oregon. Happy Groundhog Day, I almost forgot. So much commotion here today.
I hope we don't do this one over and over.
But, yeah, something he said about, thank you for doing your job. I appreciate what you all do, too, I want to let you know that. And confession time, yeah, I lived in my truck when I first came here, and, you know, worked for the Forest Service, so it happens. I don't know if everybody is aware that the Ninth Circuit Court issued an opinion several years back, which led to a kind of a lot of what we're dealing here with, which said that people are allowed to sleep, you know, basically on public property. Well, that translated down to a court decision in Oregon affirming that. And so, as a result of that decision, there is now a timeline that's in process, whereas one year from now, I think it is, we have to have a place where we can say, oh, people can go here. It's like, if we do not have that, here's an example. You know, so today, if someone sets up a, a little village at the library, you know, I can go down with a tarp, and I can pick it up, clean it up. Oh, if they keep coming back, well, I can call the police, and they can get trespass from there. Well, one year from now, if that same person's there, and I can't tell them a place that they can go to be, to sleep, there's nothing I can do to stop them from being there. So, I don't know how many people understand this is already in process, and it's something we're going to have to deal with one way or the other. I mean, because it's, a year goes by like nothing. So, you know, whatever your opinion on this particular situation, there's that thing that we're going to have to deal with. And just for the record, I don't know Court Boyce has anything to do with the U N. You know, this, if, he's pulled it off pretty slick, if he's an operative, because he's fooled me for many years. But I'd say he's a decent American.
Growing up as a kid, there was only one thing worse than me calling a litter bug. That was a communist.
No, to the best of my knowledge, Court Boyce is not a communist. I thank you all for your time here today.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim Johnson and then we'll take a break, how's that?
Welcome, Jim.
Beyond Reduction Ministry, so this is the ministry.
Yep.
I've been working with the homeless for about a half a century, literally.
Pull that mic down, Jim.
This one?
There you go.
Good job.
Okay. And on any given night, you'll see one or more people sleeping in my flower bed down the street at the old Curry Library, especially lately, because I've noted in the last year that our homeless population has taken a radical turn for the worse in mental illness. Now, this is not drug-related, this is mental illness. And there are more of them that have come, where we had four years, a year ago, we now have eight on the streets at any given night, or in the park, and so on and so forth. My, my main purpose to be here today was to get a grasp on what you all were having to deal with, and knowing the proposal, I've looked at Ofer twice over the last twenty years and ruled it out as using it for various reasons that can be discussed at some later time for those that are really interested. And I'm not going to take any time for that. And the, oh, the deferred maintenance, we don't need to talk about that, but there is deferred maintenance on that property, as I'm sure you're all well, well aware of. Because so much of my work was with group housing and so on and so forth. And that's another thing, anybody that's interested can come down. The documentaries on my work are, are there. I don't advocate them, I don't put them out there to distribute, but anybody that's interested is most, most welcome to come down and read the articles over the years that have been produced, or see the documentaries done by various news. I'm not trying to win any population at this time, I'm just trying to take care of the, the people at night that are on our streets. And, and I think I'll, I'll just throw it, but you, you made the right decision. I, I, you don't need me to give you permission to do that, but, but I'm relieved as I leave today.
Quick comment.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim, I just, you haven't given, offered public comment a long time. So good to see you here, but I, I think it's safe to say, no one in this county has sacrificed more of their time, their resources, even their own money, for people. And just to hear you clarify drug addictions versus mental illness, that, you know, the light needs to come on for all of us. Incredibly helpful, thank you for that time, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jim.
Situations like John and that family, we, we have others. And I can hardly keep unemotional when those stories come, come in.
All right, thanks, folks, we're going to take a ten-minute break, we'll be back at ten-twenty. So, stick around, and we'll get to you. Yep, 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 we're going to continue with public comment until everybody has spoke their piece. Yep, 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 we're gonna continue with public comment until everybody has spoke their piece.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the west coast's best coast is open to you and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County and don't leave anything out.
There's a shelter pet who wants to meet you. Meet one today. Visit theshelterpetproject.org. Adopt.
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the, the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all western states. A real actionable response that's including, how do we fight fire, actively managing our forest so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we gonna protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me, 'cause there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources. And as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Merv George Jr., and I'm the Forest Supervisor for the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. The first things is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm gonna focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the Fire Chief of Jackson County Fire District Three in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the, and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. Uh, it's, it's really an inspiring, um, showing of, of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our, of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue, it's bearing down on us, fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's, that's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. Um, we're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand of all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart. Because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water. 'Cause I have told them that we're all born in water, we cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans. Because there's life in that water, it's our job to keep it clean for them. 'Cause we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on the riverbank, brushing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers, 'cause they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are, you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are three thousand and sixty-nine counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill. Run court systems. Build local economies. And operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways. Keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Hi there, I'm Patrick Priest, Executive Director at CIS. And I really enjoy coming every year to this conference because CIS, we are all about counties. We are owned by counties, we were formed by the AOC. This is a great occasion for us to meet everybody in one place and learn what's important to the counties all across Oregon.
It's the networking, I mean, we learn a lot about the different issues that counties deal with, but it's networking with other commissioners, getting ideas on how they handle situations, that is the most helpful for me.
I love my job, it actually matters to me on a daily basis. I used to do a lot of charity and, you know, in commissioning, in Deschutes County, you can make a serious difference. Lots of things have happened since I've been in office and I feel like it's important to represent the people. I grew up in eastern Oregon and I love the residents of eastern Oregon. The architect of our first house actually had Doris Day as a dear friend and a client. And he would bring Doris Day up the mountains in Malibu to our house as it was being built. This is my fourth conference at AOC. My favorite part-
So we'll continue with public comments until everybody's had a chance to speak, so... We're not really going by these because there were so many, so just, uh, next in line, have at her. Okay, just a second.
One second.
Chris was gonna-
If you, if the board doesn't mind, I forgot to add to the agenda this morning and I'd like to get it on as soon as we can, um, so that the public is fully aware. Um, there was a change on the, um, and sorry, Rich, uh, from the Road Department, on the mower max, uh, that they've ordered, there was a change order.
Okay, yeah.
I have it, you can look at it and then we can decide on it later, but I'd like to add that as an agenda item, uh, which would be six L.
Six L, okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Do we need to add in form of a motion, Anthony, or?
It might just be, yeah.
I make a motion and we edit as hell.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, move to second, it all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero, okay.
Sorry, sir.
Well, that's good. You are up.
Hi, my, is it working?
Yes, sir.
My name is John Overmeyer and I just wanted to reiterate what I've already said to the three of you that I really appreciate that you listen to our comments and you, you listen to our concerns about this project and, and I believe you made the right decision and just keep up the good work.
Okay.
Okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Mr. Overmeyer, do you have a, does our office have your email address?
Uh, no, but I could give it to them.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, now we're just gonna go as, as you'd like to speak, so... Yeah, go ahead, sir. Okay. You can go after Nancy Su Rose.
Nancy Su Rose from Naseka Beach.
Okay.
And I have something completely different.
Okay.
But it's a big issue right now on the Facebook groups. And that's about the Jetty Cat Town. The group that recently started to refurbish the cat town had permission from the Knox family before they even formed the group and started fundraising to refurb, to tear down the rotten cat houses, build brand-new ones on the ones that needed it. Because there was a group who had been continuously feeding the cats, but other animals were able to get into some of those little houses. Um, and so, um, they wanted to redo them and make sure it was only the cats, not the bigger animals that were getting in there. And again, they did have permission from the Knox family to do so. And then, just a couple days ago, Scott Knox contacted the group, telling them they have two weeks to get the few cats there, and there's either four or eight cats there, I hear different things about this. And I'm not involved with this group. I just know some of the people on it and somebody contacted me and told me about this, and there's been other people commenting on the Gold Beach Community Forum about it, which is not my group. That's not my group, so I have no control over what people say on there. Just so people know, I'm, you know, every week I get contacted about complaints about that group. Well, I own Gold Beach Buy and Sell, Gold Beach Events and Activities, but I do not own Gold Beach Community Forum. So, and if you do have questions about the forum, Lori Van Zant is one of the owners of that group.
Okay.
There's two others. Okay, so anyway, so Scott Knox contacted the group, telling them they have two weeks to get the few cats that are there before the cat town is demolished for good. It has been there since nineteen ninety-two. It is his property, it is the Knox family property, so they do have the right to do that. But I just want people to know that it was, people were very upset that this group who just start, started when they made the declaration that they were disbanding, but they weren't allowed to say why they were disbanding. So I, I just want to keep the public aware that it was not their decision to start this thing and then suddenly disband. So if you did donate to the fund, the GoFundMe for that, and you want your money back, please contact Alice Ingersoll. She's the one who started that GoFundMe and she will refund your money, just contact her. And that's it.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Next.
I'm John Zimmerman, I live in Brookings. I have a question regarding the, uh, problem with housing in the county here. Developers will usually build homes if they're affordable. And so I'm just curious as to, is it a question of zoning, that there's not land to build on, or is it a question of the cost of permits? Or, you know, what, what's holding up developers from building, uh, more affordable units?
Well, if I could, I'll just pass this off to Chris, he's, he's working with a, a local landowner and, go ahead, bud.
Well, there's actually, excuse me, there's actually, uh, several people right now that have stepped forward and are looking to, uh, get some housing, uh, put on their properties. Uh, there's a couple of people that have been very generous, um, that we've spoken to. We are currently working with planning. A lot, a lot of the largest problem here is there's not a lot of buildable land. Most of the land around here is owned by the state of the federal government. A lot, and some of that is unbuiltable, zoning on some of it is not, um, you, you, you're just not gonna be able to change the zoning. Our current planning director and I have had several meetings and it is, with, with some of the state and federal regulations on some of this land, you could go through an eye of a needle before you're gonna build a house on most of this property around here, so... But there are some properties that have been identified and the, the landowners are willing to look to develop those properties. And I do believe in the next three to six months, we are going to see development begin on, on at least one or two of those properties and they're large properties. So it's going to be affordable housing and, um, I'm not gonna say apartments as well, but I, I just wanna say it will be affordable housing for everyone. That's pretty much where we are with it.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
I got one.
Sure.
It also, Mr. Zimmerman is, uh... Sorry. It's gonna have to be a legislative fix for the reasons that, uh, Commissioner Pass just identified. Available land in Curry County. You could say there's very little billable land, but you could say when you get right down to identifying the isolated pieces of property, land that's available for housing, there's more than, more than we- the isolated pieces of property, land that's available for housing, there's more than, more than what we realized. And the county has some property as well that we own that could be turned. Getting through those land use barriers is gigantic. We are making some progress in that. We're also working very closely with Coos County and we are working in the legislature. So they have got to change the attitude up there. And that, that right now is controlled by Metropolitan Oregon and so we got our, we got, we got a heavy task there. But we are starting to make some, get some dents in their armor there. Good question. In a general sense, that is correct.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Dallin.
Mr. Dallin. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and people out in cyberspace. Local resident here in Gold Beach and Curry County. Oh, the homeless situation, not just homeless, but housing, the housing situation. I'm on a committee that's specific to help develop plans to submit to you folks. And, well, we haven't made a whole lot of progress, as everybody knows. A lot of it's due to COVID and technical issues, but also just a lot of bureaucracy and Back in the early 90s, I was living in Brookings and, and I helped with other people. Helped, well, we came up here and we talked to the commissioners about a shelter that was being developed down there. There was a lot of resistance. The NIMBY people. And if you don't know what NIMBY stands for, N-I-M-B-Y. Yeah, it's a good idea, just not in my backyard. Not in my backyard. Well, it went through anyway and it was there for many years until really the federal government and the state started saying, oh, you can't slip a religious track in while you're helping somebody. That type of communism. Well, listen, it's, that court ruling somebody addressed earlier is a serious ruling. It says, if, you know, if there is no place for a person, a man, a woman, a family that's on the road, broke down, or can't stay anyplace, if there is no temporary shelter for them, they can camp right out on public property. So we do have to address this crisis. And please, don't just think homeless people are alcoholics and meth heads and junkies and whatnot. No. Yeah, there's a percentage, but there's also people that just don't earn enough, especially to pay the housing and the cost of living and housing here. My daughter has been renting for a couple of years. She's a single mom with three kids. Renting outrageous price and now that the market's nice and high, guess what? Property owner wants to sell. This is a problem. This is, this is a real problem that we have to address. We can't keep kicking the can up the river. So, but it's a matter of working together with all parties, forget the political issues. All parties involved, all branches, and, and really focusing on, on the solution. And if there is county property and buildings that are vacant, well, let's try to get them occupied. And let's try to refurbish them, rebuild those for, for people that aren't making a whole lot of money or on fixed incomes. A lot of seniors are being squeezed out because property owners now wanna sell or they wanna raise the rent every year a percentage. But the cost of living is, their wages and take home pay isn't going up to keep up with the taxation and the cost of living. So, you know, a lot of people are just gonna have to move out, I guess, if they can't afford shelter, food, clothing, and shelter here in Curry County. I might be one of them. My daughter, she's been working steady for Dr. Williams for a few years. Look, she's not making enough to, to, to buy yet. She's trying. Lord willing, something will open up. But the younger people, under 40, what do they have to look forward to here? Unless we, we help them out more with affordable housing and et cetera. Okay, that's about all.
Thanks, sir.
Brett, I can see you moving. Are you, are you, what happened?
Been sitting too long.
Okay.
Morning Commissioners, everybody gathered here? My name is Brett Cecil of Port Orford. I wanted to speak on a subject other than what we've been discussing already, but I wanted to toss my hat in here. I also came to Curry County under the graces of my good friends who allowed me to stay with them when I didn't have a place to move, when I lost everything in the 2008 money debacle in the United States of America. And I still live in an RV to this day because I can't find another place to live. I actually have stopped looking. Enough of that. So, as the Chair of my organization, I bring greetings from the Democrats of Curry County. I come here today to report on the effects of COVID-19 on our county. I wish I were delivering better news, but here's where we stand since our last meeting just two weeks ago on January 19. New cases are 351 with a pandemic total of 2,887. That's nearly 2,900. So just to give you a round number. Thankfully, we've only had one additional death with a pandemic total of 41 deaths in the county. Currently, Curry County averages 28 new cases daily. Currently, that's today. Current vaccination rates in Curry County are as follows. Single dose, nearly 64%. So we've almost hit the 65% point. Two doses plus or Johnson &amp; Johnson, we're nearly at 55%. And less than 26% have received a booster. So we're a little bit behind in our vaccination. I'm personally concerned with the current state of apathy regarding the health of our county when it comes to COVID-19. Recently, I'm hearing a lot of chatter around the fact that Omicron has reached or is coming off its peak. Now is not the time to let down our guard. During the last BOC gathering, I noticed citizens here in the annex that were mainly without masks and others wearing something less than an N95 NIH-approved mask. And additionally, I've noticed today only Mr. Pope and JJ have a mask on in this room and most of the hallways were filled with people who were not masked. I don't have confirmation, but I've heard that following the last gathering, the annex was closed because of a COVID-19 outbreak. Is that true? I know that Coos Curry Electric Co-op closed for a period last year. How many other businesses have or will close? COVID-19 is an avoidable illness. Avoidable. And on that note, I want to call the county council's attention to the fact that there is a notice on every entry door to this building that requires by state health order that all occupants of this building wear a mask and physically distance whenever possible. Mr. Herzog, as Chair, you ruled us roost. I ask you directly, enforce the law, enforce the order. Whatever happened to the rule of law in the United States of America seems to be dead. This annex is a public space in which the citizens of Curry County gather to address the business of our county. Of, by, and for the people is our government. Whether intentionally or inadvertently neglecting the state health order, you allow a known disease to unnecessarily permeate this space, threatening the well-being of all who gather here to engage in public discourse. I certainly hope that your intention is something less than an attempt to thwart the citizens from attending public meetings. Regardless, that is the outcome of your action. Mr. Gordon Clay typically gives you a robust report at every Board of Commissioners meeting. He is now forced to phone in his work out of concern for his own health. At the last BOC meeting, Mr. Pash informed us that his personal physician has essentially ordered him to work from home or would really appreciate it if he did. I personally know of at least a handful of county staff that have endured COVID-19 infections. Closing the annex last week was within your power. It is also within your power to protect the public from this insidious disease. I call on you to assess the current state of our meeting place. We as the public have a reasonable expectation that you protect us while here. Personally, I expect you, Mr. Herzog, Mr. Pash, and Mr. Boyce to take every possible precaution to protect the citizens of this county. I submit that the failure of the Board of Commissioners to enforce the duly issued state health order and protect us from a known pathogen at every possibility runs counter to your oath as commissioners to protect the citizenry in your charge. Our roadmaster is constantly assessing and repairing our roads while we as county citizens have a reasonable expectation that said roads are safe to use. Why I ask, would this building be exempt from such scrutiny? Furthermore, I ask you to consider the effect of this pathogen on our county economy. I personally closed the Democrat's office after I saw the behavior here in the Commissioners Annex, as well as that of citizens around the county. And our office will remain closed until I see proof that we are safe enough to resume our regular business without endangering the health and well-being of our volunteers and visitors. I can't imagine that responsible business owners would do anything less. In closing businesses to protect patrons and employees, we run the risk of further dampening our economy in the county. So again, I think this time I'll demand that the Board of Commissioners insert the spine necessary to exert your authority to protect all of Curry County's citizens. And again, I bring to your attention and to that of the citizenry that the Curry County website landing page still shows no sign of a link that directs users to COVID-19 testing and vaccination information. After the numerous suggestions and recommendations that I've made to the Board of Commissioners in person at this very podium, travel Curry coast and code enforcement have been added for easy access, but there is still no sign of a link for COVID-19 testing and vaccination on the county's landing page of their website. Number two, my recommendation for use of American Rescue Plan monies to provide in-home rapid COVID-19 tests and anti-COVID-19 oral medications for all citizens of Curry County has also been overlooked. I also wish to promote our upcoming election on May 17th and point out some important information. As I mentioned, our government is of, by, and for the people and we will be having an election on May 17th. So I hope that you all will participate. And I hope to see what our outcome is. Thank you, sirs, for letting me speak today.
Next.
For the record, it's not an election on the 17th, it's a primary.
Primary election?
I said it's not an election, it's a primary, not a, not a-
Can I add one sentence to my previous talk?
Sure.
I wanted to, because I was talking about the Knoxes in the North Jetty, I wanted to say I really, really appreciate the Knoxes allowing us to use the North Jetty property. My little dog buddy and I hang out there a lot. And a lot of people hang out there, especially in the salmon season because we can actually see and hear the boaters while they are fishing and it is so much fun. And so I do sincerely thank the Knoxes for allowing us to use that property. It is, it's one of the neatest places to go and hang out. It really is. So thank you for that.
Okay. So is there any more public comment? If there's not, we're gonna move forward. I'm gonna read a, cause on the beginning, we, where is that thing, Anthony?
Yeah, it's not on mine.
It's number seven.
Number seven. Number seven is a public hearing. This is supposed to be read at 10:00 AM. It's gonna get read at 10:44 AM. On today's agenda is a proposed amendment to Article 2, Division 8 of County Code, otherwise known as the Curry County Building Code. Public legal notice was posted in three locations throughout the county. Such notice will have been published in a local newspaper for two consecutive issues prior to adoption of the ordinance. Because statutory requirements have been fulfilled, this ordinance will be read by title only unless a member of the Board requests for the ordinance to be read in full. The first reading of this ordinance took place January 19th, 2022, during a public hearing before the Curry County Board of Commissioners. The effective date for this ordinance is May 3rd, 2022. A copy of the proposed ordinance will remain available at the Board of Commissioners' office during this time. The title of this ordinance is, "In the Matter of an Ordinance Amending the Curry County Building Code." Does any member of the public wish to make, wish to make any comments? Hearing none. Does the Board have any questions?
No, sir.
Court. Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve this ordinance. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries three to zero. Now moving to discussions slash actions items, 6A, signature authority.
Sir.
Okay.
We have the consent agenda still.
Oh, we gotta, we gotta approve the consent agenda as amended.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you for that catch. Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. So the consent agenda has been approved, approved as amended. Comment?
What I have is a request on another agenda item, subject to Board approval here. Alan Boyce's family was waiting and none of us were anticipating it. 45 minutes of public comment, which was good. So I just sent them home and I'm gonna, I'm gonna also tell that.
Also, the big screen.
The big screen is, is not working, so, and I have a couple of pictures that I wanted to include with the proclamation and also seeking Board approval there, so.
Move it to the next.
Yes, please.
All right.
That's okay, they're gone now.
Yeah, so 6D, we'll just move to February 16th?
And I like to have it on a presentation so we can set a precise time and there's a lot of family would like to tune in.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, moving on, we're gonna, 6D, we can cross out. That's not gonna happen. So 6A is signature authority of right-of-way and construction easement documents from South Coast Lumber Company for Moral Bridge Construction Project, Richard Christiansen, Roadmaster. And he is not here.
I, I told him I didn't think we would really need him. It's just a signature authority.
Right. So look for, if there's any discussion or just, I need a-
I make a motion to approve 6A signature authority on the right-of-way of construction easements for South Coast Lumber for the Moral Bridge Construction Project for Richard Christiansen, Christiansen, our Roadmaster.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It moved and seconded. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. This is a project that's been a long time in the making. There was some hiccups and so we're just-
It's been put off twice.
And the next one is 6B, signature authority for the dire task order, 10D, an amount not to exceed $293,195 for the project. And I think Rich was in all of our offices this week and shared with us that it's only gonna cost the county-
Yeah, we get 89% back, I think.
89%, so I mean, it's a very minimal price for the county. And so I look for a motion to-
So moved.
Approve 6B.
So moved.
And second?
Second, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 6C, we were going to discuss, support of Independence Day event slash fireworks show with TLT Transit Lodging Tax Funds. Summer Mattson. There she is, yeah. I see her, Summer.
Morning Commissioners, Summer Madison, Economic Development Coordinator. Do you wanna discuss first or you want me to read my information? What would you like?
I think, give it.
Okay. So I'm, I'm sure you saw I had produced a few last-minute little flyer overviews of Central, North, and South County, kind of just showcasing what each independence show produces. Unfortunately, I didn't think to bring them up on the screen, but for the public, they're in the meeting packet. Take a look if you'd like. they're in the meeting packet, take a look if you'd like. Historically, the celebration of Independence Day in Southern Oregon coast communities, and more specifically our ports, has drawn record numbers of visitors. The past two years of COVID have greatly hindered the ability to execute and fundraise for expenses like fireworks shows, therefore rendering July 4th events handicapped or disabled completely. With the rising cost of goods and services, pricing events out of existence, a hand-up in sustaining and rebuilding the draw of tourism on the Southern Oregon coast for the Independence Holiday Weekend brought a unanimous vote in support by the Tourism Promotions Committee at their January committee meeting with a commitment of $10,000 to South, Central, and North Curry County. So fun fact, for many, many years, our veterans groups took the responsibility in great part to fundraise for the fireworks shows. This past five years has shown that effort more difficult to deliver on, but even though the funding wanes, patriotism does not. Another fun fact, did you know that our volunteer fire departments donate their time to produce and oversee our fireworks shows every year? Did you know the Gold Beach Fire Department sustains pyrotechnics qualifications, bringing the overall cost of shows down as they are able to run the shows themselves? Recent conversations through the Tourism Promotions Committee brought the opportunity for North and South County to gain similar qualifications for their respective communities through collaboration with the Gold Beach Fire Department. And ultimately, we envision the fire training facility having the ability to provide these trainings as the facility develops with time. This also gives potential to cut the amount of uncontrolled fireworks activities every year, and therefore minimizing the amount of fire calls for our firefighter volunteers. And that there is likely more monetary return on this effort than just, more than just monetary effort on this return, right? I'm sorry, more than monetary return on this effort. So what does a fireworks show cost in this economy right now? Which is going to be different next week, it's $30,000 to $40,000 per small-town show. And that's just for the fireworks. That's not the folks to come in and oversee the show or any of the other happenings that need to take place, just the fireworks. So who benefits? Tourism-based businesses, lodging, restaurants, gas stations, mini-marts, grocery stores, fishing charters, farmers' markets, ports, other events. I think the question really is, who doesn't benefit? So let's get into some numbers real quick. So there's an average of $7 spent in return for every dollar we invest in tourism. So that has the potential to return $70,000 to Central, South, and North County. And you'll notice I continue to refer to them as Central, South, and North because it's, it's not in support of our cities. Our cities really don't take responsibility for those shows. You're going to see those happen more at our ports. Let's see, so overall, an estimated $210,000 return on those tourism dollars countywide. So what does that look like for return to the TLT program specifically? About $14,700 direct return to the program. And I don't know if, I'm really hoping that you looked at the flyers, because these aren't just fireworks shows, these are community builder events. When you look at the Port Orford Jubilee, it's an incredible feat. Spaghetti feats, they do food vendors, art walks, book sales for the libraries, jerry can racing, horseshoe pitching, golf tournaments, keg ring tosses, pool events, citywide yard sale, art and craft vendors. You imagine it, they pull it off. And people love it. People love to come from a big city, and they're like, oh, I feel like I'm actually part of this community, and the community's like, come hang out with us, right?
That one where they do the rowboat from Battle Rock Beach, Battle Rock Park? That is, that is, the dinghy races.
Yeah, and they also...
If you've never seen that, it is amazing. But depending, depending on how rough the ocean is. Yeah.
They really go all out, and, and there's some, if you get a chance to go on Instagram and take a look at some of these events, historical photos, it really brings this great sense of pride and a, and a desire to continue this event.
Port Orford's got one thing on everybody else. They have wind, so they usually get to see their fireworks, guaranteed pretty much every year. Where we, sometimes in Brookings, we just get pretty fog, so.
So lastly, and then I'll open it up. So I would like to acknowledge the deficit looming with the general fund. I would also like to offer participation in work groups geared towards alleviating the strain on the general fund and the road department while expanding services to our law enforcement countywide. I, I know that, and we are very aware that, you know, it's, it's difficult to bring this to the commission on the heels of really making some tough decisions about how we handle homeless citizens in our community and how we work towards sustaining their livelihood. On the flip side, it is also difficult to acknowledge, and I understand that when we have a shortfall for critical services like law enforcement, people would ask the question, how come we can't provide this here, but we have all this money to kind of throw at events? Well, I want to remind everybody that the transient lodging tax program is, is governed and mandated for services within that program through the state. And so the county falls in line with Travel Oregon and state requirements for running that program. So the 95% of the 30% of the overall TLT program funding that comes in does go to the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement. Do we have opportunity to do more in a different capacity? Absolutely, but unfortunately, I know that this is a tough discussion on the heels of some of the things that have been brought up this morning, so. So the, I will tell you, to the Tourism Promotions Committee, they did approve this unanimously, and I think that the $10,000 is the cap for them without having to come before the Board. And we felt that it was the responsible, transparent thing to do, to bring that to the Board of Commissioners, even though it's $10,000 per show, overall it's $30,000. And not only that, but we wanted the community to be aware that we were looking at, you know, moving this forward to the Commissioners, but your committee has already unanimously approved that, that vote.
Okay, any questions for Summer? Court?
I think I've asked you this before, but I can't remember. The breakdown between the three sections of the county, and you know, Brookings brings in approximately this percent of the TLT within the county. Do you, do you have that? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, it's, it might even be a little tough to figure. Just interested there.
No, and as a matter of fact, it's ironic you say that because data analytics is something that I've talked to both of you so far about in regards to having those skillsets available here at the county. And so I've signed up for a course that will help us dive deeper into that resource without having to outsource with a software company. However, the, the county TLT does not have an umbrella over the city TLTs. So what Port Orford collects, what the city of Gold Beach collects, and what the city of Brookings collects is, is separate programming from unincorporated Curry County. There is discussion about, hey, can we do an overlay and maybe provide services countywide that include, you know, collaboration with the cities? You know, are, are we bringing in too much revenue as far as tourism promotions goes? And we can back that up a little bit, like the state did a few years back? I mean, there's always conversations to be had in that perspective, but no, we, we don't have any interest or investment in the city TLT programs outside of supporting them.
No, but I mean, the county TLT portion that is, with that three-section breakdown at some point, I think that'd be good information to have.
So you're wanting the demographic, so like, what does South County bring in, North County and Central?
Yeah, then it's just a general sense, and you don't have to do it today, because that's kind of a moving target, I think.
Because you know it's unincorporated, right? So the city...
Yeah, yeah, not to do with the, no. Cities have their own thing, sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, I don't think that'll be too difficult to produce. However, I, I will mention that we are pretty bogged down with the strategic plan right now, and so if you could give us some, some time in producing that.
No, there's no hurry. The only thing I have is, you know, fairly recently, you give kind of an itemized list of expenditures for the TLT, and I think getting that before the public, where that money's going, you know, fairly consistent, is consistently is a good, is a good idea. So, you know, we all like fireworks, and I'm thinking, okay, $30,000, that's a pretty big chunk, you know? And I'm, you know, I would encourage the Board maybe to table this or even just consider half of that, $5,000 still for each community. And just be on guard a little bit, and hold that, hold those extra funds. July 4th is still a long ways away, you know, growing up here as a kid, everything for 4th of July was Port Orford. Gold Beach had the fair in August, and of course, Brookings had the Zaya Festival in so, in May. And so it was, it was always, okay, we know we're gonna go every one of those three periods and support the entire county. And I'm not recommending that, you know, we just do Port Orford fireworks. However, it just, you know, for what that's worth, and just in, in all the long-term efforts to bring the county together and be aware, and so, yeah. I would, I would look at $5,000 for each, each region, I think, for each city.
Thank you, Commissioner. I always do appreciate your pause for consideration of, you know, what the alternatives might be in funding in an effort to save revenues. Those monies are specific to tourism promotions, and that fund has more than enough money to sustain these shows in addition to the rest of what the Tourism Promotions Committee has coming up. The other thing that I'd like to offer is technically the deadline for commitment of the funding for the fireworks was January 31st. And I, I asked the Tourism Promotions Committee to not move forward on, on making that happen until we could respectfully bring that before the Board. But you have designated them as your committee to go ahead and spend those funds without having to bring that to you first, and so I wanted to remind you of that. The other thing is that in regards to the, the, the spending and the revenues specific to Tourism Promotions Committee, we definitely heard, we heard that request. And so that is on the tourism, or it's on the transient lodging tax program page. It's available, and it's updated quarterly the month after the quarter has ended. So it's kept up pretty consistent, and like I've offered previously, you know, it's, it's really great, we're in a growth spurt, and so it hurts a little bit, but it's really helping us see, I think we're probably one of the most transparent departments in some of the work we do with the community, and when it's brought to our attention that it's not enough, it's definitely a learning opportunity for us, you know, we need to do better, we need to pay more attention. And so you're looking at that TLT page and the program information, and if you're getting feedback that, you know, we'd like to, maybe it'd be easier to read this way, or maybe you could throw this in, we're all about that, just let us know what you think.
Yeah, not in any way part of a complaint or...
Oh, sure, I understand, Commissioner.
Thank you, yeah, you know, I've just been saying for a couple of years, we don't know, three years, we don't know what's around the corner, and so if there's a way to just cut spending, you know, that's where I'm gonna go and leave it in the bank, invested, whatever. And so, you know, but I'm 50/50, I'm excited for the project, it's a good presentation. So I can make a motion, or maybe somebody else has questions?
Chris?
Well, I think, again, this is just a matter of the Tourism and Promotions Committee being transparent with the Board. The Tourism and Promotions Committee is empowered to spend this money, they don't have to ask us to do that. I think Summer is just bringing this as a matter of transparency to the public and this Board, so I don't really think we have a vote on it, it's just more of a discussion item on this, am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and yes, you don't have to make a vote. Can you, can you make a recommendation or suggestion that you would like me to take back to the Tourism Promotions Committee? I'm happy to do that, I'll follow your lead.
We can sure, we can sure make, you know, I can entertain a motion to approve this, and, and that would be giving you support to, you know, that would be giving the TLT committee a support, so.
If, if you think that's safer based on the fact that it's $10,000 per area of the county with a total of $30,000, which, you know, the, it kind of is on that, that fine line of the spending limits without approval from the Commissioners?
I, I like that.
Okay.
So I, at this point, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion with, with comment and discussion.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Been moved and seconded, discussion.
Well, I, I think for me, with the state of the county right now, I, I know this is just a transparency thing, and that the Tourism Promotions Committee has the power to do this. For me, tourism is extremely important in this county, I am all for expanding. But with the state of the county right now, I would have preferred to shy away from this if, if I had, if we had the authority to do that, which we don't, but, you know, maybe we need to look, you know, I'm, I'm gonna keep that comment quiet for a few minutes, but I, I'm just, with, with the state of the county, there are a lot of things that are, that are a much deeper need. I'm glad to see families gather to watch, hopefully be able to see fireworks, but I believe personally there's a greater need this year and perhaps next year. So I, I would have, I would have perhaps not done this. But again, it's, it's not in my, not in my hands, so that's my comments.
Court?
Well, thank you. You know, it is noteworthy that you brought this before the Board, because you clearly don't have to, and I recognize that, but that kind of transparency is sometimes what we're lacking in, in our job to manage well and understand everything that we can. So, yeah, much appreciated.
Thank you.
You know, during the, during the Depression era, my gosh, history will tell you...
You're not that old.
They couldn't afford, no, I wasn't there.
I thought he was.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but...
That's okay, we needed a laugh, so, you know, the, the cuts that they had to make within their families, a lot of times they would not avoid or in lieu removing themselves and going to the theater. That was a big deal, they were, they could not give that up, you know, because they had that one thing. So fireworks might in some way, in some fashion, take, take place of that. You know, again, final, again, thank you for the extra time, Mr. Chair, but yeah, we just don't know what's going on in seven months. I mean, our gas is going up, I can't imagine what the road department and Sheriff's Department deal with in the fuel costs. Who would have anticipated that? You know, when we're nationally an energy of independent country, and now we are, you know, $5, so I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen, I'm not pessimistic in the next five months, six months, year, two, five. But I would just be on guard, and so we have a motion, I'm gonna support it, but, you know, then Commissioner Pash just said, hey, you know, maybe I would have paid or spent a little less on this. It's still, we're always dealing with thousands of dollars, and that's, we never want to lose sight of, of the significance of that. That's all, thank you.
Okay, so I'll call for the, the vote, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no, motion carries three to zero.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. And I know that the Tourism Promotions Committee folks are probably online right now, just all smiles.
All right, next up is 6E, Curry County COVID Omicron Update. Mr. Boyce? Is that...
You got the mouse now? Well, so we're gonna get on the, all the options there.
You see the folder in the bottom left?
Oh.
I can't, I don't have my glasses.
We're working. Good job, JJ, okay. Is it the bottom three here?
You're going up, up, up. One more, is that it, one more?
Well, there we go. Thank you. Well, there's always. Vaccination report, so I know this is controversial, controversial, or can be. You know, you don't see me wearing a mask today, there's the country of England, the country of Denmark, they have put, they have abolished all mandates. A lot of people want the United States to do that, we're looking at what's going on with our schools. I have a report from the John Hawkins University in just a minute, a brief report. Where I want to go here, and, and this is good information, by the way. Total vaccinated, let's just say in Brookings, 56%, Gold Beach, 57%, Port Orford, 71%. Langless, oh yeah, Langless at the bottom, they're right at, everybody's vaccinated there. So this is, I just encourage people to, to view this report. Each week it comes out, and I try and, and... and I try and, and stay tuned in a little bit to this. You know, as mentioned earlier about shutting down the annex, I just want the public to know that I was not in support of that, the Sheriff's Department, the Road Department, certainly juvenile, DA, everybody else worked, and so that was, that was a four-day period here that I did not support and I, I don't think it was necessary and I, we're, we're gonna get through this, let's see, is there a link here, John? No, that's old. The link that I sent you?
No, I missed that.
Okay, so maybe we can do it, I'll, I'll table it too, we're gonna have quite a meeting next quarter, next on the sixteenth. So, I'm a little bit of a disadvantaged without the, without the screen here. One of the links was a question, COVID question hotline, which is Oregon option for people and they have questions to tune in with, any questions that they have, any assistance that they need. I put on your, I put on your desk a proclamation, excuse me, and I don't have it on the screen either, but we, we can, we cannot stop the spread of COVID, but we can end the pandemic, so I don't know, I didn't make a copy as well. Can I read yours? Thank you. I'm gonna read the first page of four here and, you know, having shown you the, the weekly report from OHA and the intention, attention that they're giving Creek County and, and that commitment, I just wanna read the first page of this. It came out on December, in late December, "The arrival of the Omicron variant has led some politicians and public health grandees to call for return to business closures and circuit breaker lockdowns. The variant has been found worldwide, including in the U.S. and the U.K., the variant has already surpassed data dominant before Omicron in the United Kingdom. Early reports from South Africa confirm that the variant is more transmissible but produces a milder disease with a lower chance of hospitalization and death upon infection." I'll read that again, with a lower chance of hospitalization and death upon infection and that's the way it's been in Oregon and of course the United States. Their message is this, "We can't stop the spread of COVID, but we can end the pandemic." In October twenty twenty, I wrote the author Great Barrington Declaration along with Professor Sanutra Gupta of Oxford University and Professor Martin Koldorf of Harvard University. The counterpiece of the declaration is a call for increased focus protection of the vulnerable pop, older population who are more than a thousand times more likely, more than a thousand times more likely to die from COVID infection than the young. We can protect the vulnerable without harming the rest of the population. As I stated above, we do not have any technology that, that can stop viral spread, while excellent vaccines protect the vaccinated versus hospitalization or death if infected, they provide only temporary and marginal protection versus infection and disease transmission after the second dose. The same is likely true for booster shots which use the same technology as the initial doses. What about lockdowns? So, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna recall and report to the public, what John Hopkins University determined was that over a period of the, of, I think it was an eighteen-month study, especially when it comes to our kids, it has done absolutely no good and has, has actually had some reverse effects. And, you know, that is a very, very well-respected organization and very credible and so they put a lot of time and effort into this study. I wish I could read you just the two first small paragraphs, but I, I don't have those either. But I would encourage anybody, just, just Google John Hopkins University School Study and, and it will come up. Locally, our schools here have been hit very hard, in particular, as I understand, Gold Beach, but they did not shut down. The teachers and students, one time I heard it was like thirty percent of the kids and the teachers were out. Going a fairly quick pace here, kind of a negative note, OHA reports are still, we just got this information Tuesday, yeah, excuse me, Monday, day for yesterday, that Oregon and the national test kits, no word on when they'll, we're gonna get those unfortunately. And, and they give a specific time, but that has moved pretty slow. Daily here at the county annex and the courthouse, we're having cleaning every day or every other day, so I think the crew is doing all that they can do there, but it's also a daily reminder for employees to make good choices and help stop the spread. And one local doctor, and we're very lucky to have the physicians that we have here, how you doing, John?
Just getting ready.
That's one, yeah, I'll take the mouse in a minute, thank you. Local doctor, and this is a quote, "The incessant fear generated by the national media," now he doesn't want to be identified either, but trust me, I, I wrote down word for word what he said, and the reason he doesn't want to be identified is because he can get thrown off of social media and he's a very good doctor and again, we have, we have several excellent doctors in our community. "The incessant fear generated by the national media has led to the institution of medical practices that are not only ineffective, but contrary to scientific understanding and leads to a far greater toll on our people and their mental and physical well-being as opposed to letting the pandemic run its course if we had done that essentially from the beginning. We wouldn't have had near this many negative medical consequences which are far more damaging the coronavirus itself. The worst consequences, social isolation leads to suicidal, homicidal, and drug addictions." We have a vaccine adverse event reporting system, V A E R S, that a lot of doctors use, most doctors use, more associated deaths with this fact, vaccine than all other vaccine deaths combined in history, unquote. The only other thing I would add here, oh, we have thirteen cases of masks out in the hallway, hope you like Pastel Blue if anybody needs a mask. I just wanna go, this is what I sent out, a letter to the editor back in September, and it's just the basics, stay home when possible, group gatherings, COVID testing, I mean, we had people shoulder to shoulder here, I don't know what the consequences are gonna be of that, if any, you know, most people are getting through it with their own immune system, but group gatherings, COVID testing, hygiene focus, mask and face covering, social distancing, looking out for the most vulnerable, and then you go proper diet, exercise, and the vitamins, there's, there's six things that you can take that really helps build your immune system, vitamin C, D3, vitamins zinc, magnesium, green tea, that stuff's terrible, melatonin, never would have thought, you know, but there you have it. So, I, I'd like to give a COVID report like every month, but if, if we keep going and the numbers go down, the hospitalizations, Creek County stands at forty-two deaths since, as we are well into the third year here, thank you, Mr. Chair, everybody be on guard, that's all I have.
Moving on, we're gonna move to six F, appointments to the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council. You have in your packet three different folks, I have a ballot for each of us, we will write that ballot down, hand it to the, our council and if it's unanimous, if it's unanimous, we'll pick one, the first.
Thank you, another tough vote, goodness.
Drum roll. And the winner is?
The board has selected Janice Payne.
Janice Payne?
To fill the position.
From Brookings, Oregon? Payne is a old, old name down there, so congratulations, Janine.
Sorry.
We'll be in touch with her, right, Anthony, to let her know?
That's correct, and I just wanted to point out, we're actually filling two positions for the other position, there's only one application received by Ashley Jones to be appointed as the youth education position, so that'd be part of the vote as well.
Okay. She, she gets it because she's the only one, so... So, do you still need that in a motion? Yes?
Yeah, she's the only one.
No, I mean the F.
Still have to vote.
Everything as a whole, yeah.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, here is...
I'll second.
Okay, thanks for the second motion, and the second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. The next one is six G, Budget Committee Appointment. I understand we have a Budget Committee resignation.
Yes, we had a resignation from the Budget Committee and we only had two applicants. We filled one of those applicants at our last meeting, or two meetings ago, and with the resignation, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Alcorn, who's been on the Budget Committee for the last three or four years, back onto the Budget Committee, and I know he's also running for County Commissioner, so I would ask that this board only approve that for one, for one term, and then if he's elected as, as County Commissioner, then of course he would step down and we would have to appoint someone else. I know that the rules of the Budget Committee are to have one north, central, and south, but we only had two applicants to start that process at this late date would be really, really difficult to do and that's why I would say Mr. Alcorn only be appointed for this particular budget season, because we are in Budget Committee meetings in a few weeks. So, he's been aboard, the Chair of the Budget Committee for the last three years, I believe, so I think he's a perfect fit as a replacement on a temporary basis, that's my motion.
Okay.
We need his experience, will be very helpful. We're not getting into a logjam with, you know, how, how, is it an order or an ordinance that requires us to have all three county sections represented?
So, that's something I, you know, I started looking into yesterday, it was, whatever the ordinance or order was, was passed before nineteen ninety, and so those aren't digitalized, so we actually have the clerk looking to find the original order, but I, I know that there has been times in the past when we've appointed people from the same district for short term to the, the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Council Pope, I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, it's been moved to seconded, all, any question or other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Now you guys have to help me because I can't, I didn't have...
Next one was Parks, we pulled that from the consent.
So, Anthony, you wanna...
I'm, yeah, that's right, Parks.
You wanna read that or...
I'm sorry, no, I misspoke. The next one is six H, the supplemental budget for maintenance, I'm sorry.
Supplemental.
Send it down. I misspoke. That was Commissioner Boyce wanted to pull that.
We'll have that discussed, so...
Right.
Do we have anybody from finance that could talk to that? Sina, I still, thank you for coming in.
Hello there.
Hi, Sina.
Good timing.
So, what we've got is the supplemental and is just to move existing dollars between categories. In the maintenance department, he has the regular occupancy, which is wear and tear on the buildings, just to patch a wall, those type of things, and then he has the building repair and construction projects department, which encompasses more extensive repairs or updates. And there's been so much unbudgeted, things that have had to be done this year that he's had to use from one department out of the other. And so this is just to realign it, is taking it out of the regular occupancy and putting it into his projects or vice versa, wherever it needs to line up. It's not any new dollars, not asking for any more, just moving from one department to the other.
Any questions for...
Just Sina, the, the different departments paying into the general fund for maintenance, is, that, that's not included in here?
The, they, they don't pay into the general fund. The, the different departments are charged a formula depending on the space they occupy that goes into the repair and maintenance department, and it's just to maintain their space, it doesn't go into the general fund.
Gotcha, okay, I probably didn't ask the right question there. I think you clarified in that it, it didn't increase the budget, it was no additional expenditures, it was just you're, you're moving some figures around.
Alignment, yeah.
Exactly, just lining them up the way they need to be, it's, it's called reallocating between categories, so it's not any new money, not any reduction, not any increase, it's just moving from one of his departments that didn't have the money for the purposes that are coming up. He does have it, but it's in the other department.
Did, did you initiate this for the board to review or did Director Ricker?
Brad Ricker.
Okay, thank you.
But he's out and so...
He, he's still out sick?
He is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, any more questions?
No, thank you for coming, no.
Okay.
I move that we approve this.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Next one is the I, the adopt position of existing, position senior, senior accounting clerk.
Okay.
Good morning, Julie Swift, payroll and HR, what kind of questions do you have about this?
Questions, now's your chance.
It was Commissioner Boyce.
Hang on here, that did, that had no information. I'm trying to get back to, let's see, what was the number on that again, five?
It was five F.
Hang on one second for me.
Well, there's, there's E and F, so one was the prevention specialist coordinator and one was the senior accounting clerk.
I don't think you pulled E, I think it's just F.
Thank you, I got it.
Would we pull F?
So, so, so the background on this, just to give some background, so Sina, Sina will be retiring at the end of April, so this is replacing, replacing the position of Assistant Finance Director with this senior accounting clerk, which is in place prior, which she was for a long time, so excuse me, so this is just, Brad doesn't see the need for an Assistant Finance Director, he believes that he will be able to take on some of those duties that she's been doing, and with the upgrade in Cassell and people being able to do more remote entry of things, that the position doesn't need to be an assistant, it's putting it back into this senior accounting clerk.
You know, the reason I, I ask, it does say senior, I, I didn't catch the, the Sina Crook part, and so in all the calls we had over the Ofer School Project, there was a Sina in Brookings and boy, I had to do a double take, I had to know they didn't move down there, you know? I almost said, "Sina, what are you doing in Brookings anyway?" So, no, in the future, I'd like to have more information, this is just one page and a little, little vague, should have her last name, and just one final thing to verify, and I think you already covered it just in case, this is, this is for Carrie Dexter to eventually...
No, Carrie is staying in the accounts payable position and the backup to payroll, so this is repli, so she will be staying there, this is putting, this is replacing Sina with someone else.
Gotcha.
And he intends, I believe, to have it be a part-time position, which, just like I said, because of more automated duties in Cassell, we may not need a full-time person, but this is adopting the job description as revised and you should have, there should have been two job descriptions in there, one showing the previous with all the markups and then a clean one showing the changes made.
Very good.
Yes.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chair, that we adopt the position description for senior accounting clerk in finance.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries three to zero. Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
The next one was five G, Commissioner Boyce had pulled that one as well.
Okay, Creek County?
Supplemental budget.
Is it supposed to be raid?
Radio, I think.
Radio, okay, yeah, radio dispatch, yeah, raid is like...
Oh, raid?
Creek County raid.
That, that wasn't my...
Radio dispatch system supplement. So, I think that's why John and Stacy...
So, I see the sheriff is here, who wants to, the only question I have is, so when you do a new dispatch system, it tore out part of your program, part of your hallway, office, desk, all the above?
Well, originally, we, we got the approval to replace all the consoles and that's all the extensive computer equipment and the screens and everything, and when they came to, you know, look at where they were going to put it, they said that this furniture you have will not support the weight and the... that this furniture you have will not support the weight and the, all the equip, the new equipment. And besides that old qu, uh, furniture is, um, way beyond, it's very old and it's breaking down all the time. And then, uh, the one commissioner and, uh, I think a maintenance guy came over and we were looking at the flooring and the carpet was all ripped up in different places, causing it a tripping hazard. And they said, if you're gonna replace all the furniture, the flooring needs to be replaced first. I, uh, had my dispatch supervisor, Stacy Aranda, uh, Sergeant Stacy Aranda spearheading this and I put her in charge of getting this all done. She's done a fabulous job in getting this all taken care of. In fact, Day Wireless is there today installing all the new equipment. So I'm gonna bring her up and so she can, uh, answer any of those additional questions you may have.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi.
Any questions for Stacy?
I have one.
Okay.
Stacy, y- you and I met yesterday in full transparency and I'd like you, you, you said something to me yesterday that really struck me. And I, I want the public to understand, you know, some of what your, your people do. Um, and you said they're not even allowed to leave their desk while they're here, so this is why we're, so I, I, I don't wanna put those words in your mouth. You, you tell me, you tell us what you said yesterday.
Uh, the new furniture is important. It's been seventeen years since anything's been updated in dispatch, carpet, furniture. Um, we work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. There is no moving from that schedule. This furniture gets used all the time. It's extremely important that we have it updated and working. Um, the furniture was starting to break down, uh, much like the radio consoles and other stuff we've, you know, been using, so, um, it's got everything, oops, sorry. Uh, it's got everything, um, the height adjustment for the keyboard and the monitor services. Um, it's got cable management, which was really important to us as far as safety and appearance. Um, it's made to have the cabling that is utilized in the furniture to be within an encasement and moves with the furniture, so we don't have wires and out, um, outlets throughout like we did in the previous furniture setup. Fans and heaters specific to the, each console. And so we're not only updating the furniture because it needs to be updated, we're taking care of the people that work at each station, which is extremely important to me as well.
And I'd kinda like the people to know that, I mean, as Stacy just said, um, these guys are twenty-four, seven. They're not in a fancy office that's out looking at, you know, out the beautiful trees and the sunshine outside. This is in the basement.
It's a belly.
Of a building that we, we personally wanna demolish, that's how bad this building is. So, um, to give them a comfortable workspace and have them enjoy the time that they are there with, with at least comfort, because it's not only the, the surroundings that they work in, but the mental strain that they're under, dealing with what they have to deal with and the emergency calls that they have to deal with in this county is immeasurable.
Yeah.
And, uh, and to give them a comfortable workspace to be able to work at, I think we don't spend ARP dollars any better than that.
Yep. Any other questions? Go ahead.
No, this has nothing to do with the seven hundred fifteen thousand on dispatch. This is some, this is a remodel that is just absolutely imperative and I, I want the public just to know that. So, uh, it looks like kind of a good deal actually for ninety-three hundred?
Well.
No. Ninety-three hundred is the carpet.
That was.
And we replaced it with tiles so that we don't have to roll out a whole new pad of carpet if, if this happens again.
I didn't print out the supplemental budget, so I apologize. I, I think it's on the original, um.
Originally, the radio consoles were seven hundred and eleven thousand.
Gotcha, okay.
And then the furniture is about seventy-six thousand. And then the, um, carpet is ninety-three hundred. So it's the additional seventy-six and ninety-three hundred, so about eighty-six thousand dollars, give or take, is what the supplemental is gonna be.
So I don't have the total, is it?
Eighty, eighty-six thousand.
Eighty-six, thank you.
And just so, just so you know also, the District Attorney's Office, I believe Josh said yesterday, is going to be taking some of this furniture and reusing it. So the old furniture is still gonna get a little bit more life out of it.
Yeah.
Were you able to get a little extra room somewhere in there? No?
We were able to, um, reconfigure how dispatch is set up, so it's much more efficient now. And it does give us more, uh, wall space as well as ground space to be able to utilize it more effectively.
We, we were gonna do the video of the jail, so we need to do it before the construction is done, so.
Yeah, they're over there working on getting everything back and we had it, we had to build the temporary dispatch room in the Sally Port to make sure this happened. So we're moving equipment back in there now. We'll be getting the radio consoles, uh, installed and then we're having our nine-one-one system upgraded, which the state pays for.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this before the board and sorry we didn't get to you sooner, but we're, we're getting, we're improving our time management.
It was quite a deal, cause.
Yes.
They, they had to move, we had to move into this manufacturer and you talk about cramped. So, and now they're gonna move in, so it's, it's really been a pretty smooth transition.
Maintenance, our county maintenance has done an amazing job. They're very accommodating and, uh, they've worked very hard on this project for several weeks, so.
That's great to hear.
And no real glitches, right, as far as?
Nope. We, uh, I mean, a little bit here and there, but that's expected.
Yeah.
So we were able to get through it and hopefully we'll be back in our new dispatch center in the next two days.
Very good. For entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion, this is gladly.
Okay.
Excuse me.
I'd like to invite you over to come see it too, just so you have a visual of what we're talking about. You'd be amazed on the transformation.
Yeah.
Especially a couple of days after it's all set up and, and, and working.
Yeah, well, we were, we were on the impression that it was gonna be taken care of under the ARP to begin with, or otherwise we would've came to the board and said, hey, we have this additional thing. We thought it was all part of the same project, which it is.
Yeah.
And, um, so when we had the flooring was the first thing that had to be replaced. So that was all put in, we have a bill, we submitted it and it's, oh, we can't pay this, it wasn't approved and, okay, we need to get that in front of the board to get an approval, so that.
Yeah, and actually a savings of a thousand dollars or more on the flooring, so, and they had it in stock and so it's very nice. So I got a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Got a second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Now we're to Parks.
Now we're to Parks. So on, uh, sometime in January, the board decided we were, we're gonna, so Anthony, do you wanna just read that or?
Sure. So this is, this is the letter that basically we're asking the, the board to, to agree to and sign. And, um, I guess just a little background, uh, you know, there hasn't been a director of, of the Parks for several months now. And Commissioner Herzog has been working to, uh, to work with other county departments to put together somebody to, to take over those responsibilities. So the letter just says, the Board of Commissioners has determined that all duties and matters relating to the Curry County Parks Department will here and after be joined, jointly assigned to the Curry County Juvenile Department and Curry County Veteran Service Department effective, uh, February second, two thousand twenty. Account information, payment methods, templates, procedural manuals and all other parts documentation and information currently held by any employee as part of their scope of work. And so far as the County Parks Department shall be delivered, the Director Wendy Lang at the earliest convenience.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I, I just hope that Wendy and, and, and our veterans, Tony, can get, get going on this and do a great job. I know Tony's a hundred miles an hour and I support him a hundred percent. And Wendy, I know dots every I and crosses every T, so I really look for some future improvement and I hope to pursue the state's offer that we, uh, we look into some of the other state-owned parks in this county. And I hope, uh, hope Tony and Wendy get on that as well.
Yes, sir. So entertain a motion there, folks.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Mr. Chair, you gonna give a little more detail of Commissioner comments later on?
On that?
Yeah, just how things are going.
Okay, yeah, I can.
You can do it the sixteenth.
I can, yeah. So where are we as far as six? Are we to L, which was?
Uh, we are the, uh, I had another addition, which was L, the mower, uh, mower max.
Okay, yeah, the mower head, yep.
Um, and, and what this is.
I thought I saw Rich, Rich, are you out there? He was here for a second and gone, so.
Anyway, there's a couple of changes. Here's the changes, I put a little arrow on them. What Rich, uh, showed me yesterday, uh, in the midst of everything else we were dealing with, was that he had a couple of changes that he asked for to be made. Uh, it's a quick disconnect for this mower max, so he can put a tree grinder on it. Uh, there's a mower that fits on it. There's also a saw head that fits on this. And all they had to do was order the disconnect for it and that's the difference. I think it's twenty, twenty-some-odd thousand dollars for that. And then they are expecting delivery on that, I think, uh, next month. So, and there's two of them, so that's, that was what he was hopeful to, uh, to get the board to approve, so he can call them immediately and get that on there.
But just a little clarification, I think there's two machines, but I think he's just getting one of the grinders.
Right, just one grinder, yeah.
Just one grinder.
And, and the disconnect system.
Yeah, and the quick disconnect, you can have the mower head and then put this other thing on and take a tree from the top to the bottom.
It's a, it's a manly tool.
It was twenty-eight thousand for that portion, correct?
Yes, for the disconnect and the other head.
So I'm looking at two invoices here, one with three hundred and eighty thousand, one for four hundred and eight thousand. That's what we approved, what, six months ago?
Well, we did, yeah.
And so we're, we're.
All we do is we are mending it so that he can, uh, put the other on there.
Yeah, good, thank you guys. Did you want J.J. to have this?
Well.
I'll, I'll take it back.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, the, the difference in the invoice.
Second, Mr. Chair.
For the mower max.
Been moved in second and all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
All right.
Now where are we at?
Uh, Commissioner updates.
Commissioner updates, Commissioner Herzog. I really don't have any updates. I will have, you know, I could speak more to Parks, um, just, just a quick update on Parks, so we brought juvenile and the veteran services, um, right now together and I think it's a, it's gonna be a marriage made in heaven as far as twenty hours apiece for each. We got, um, Waylon Summers out of, out of, out of juvenile department and Anthony Vaudie out of the veteran services. Both of them good workers and, uh, ready to tackle this. They have great, um, vision for the Parks, getting Voice Cope taken care of and cleaned up really nice and secure. And, and, uh, and then concentrating on, um, a lot of, a lot of work needs to be done at Lobster Creek, so. And then like Commissioner Pass said, in the future, expanding parks with, with something down in the Brookings area, maybe Six's River, um, Edson Creek, um, park up there, four or five miles up the river. So that's just, and, and they agreed to it and, um, it's gonna free up some, uh, other areas of admin that'll help out with maybe some maintenance. And so it's just a way of, of consolidating and we're, we're actually, you know, it's gonna be a, a money saver because we're not hiring a Parks Director. We're gonna split this up and, uh, so I think it's gonna be really good. Wendy's looking at me from the hallway, maybe she would like to say something to that, uh...
Good timing.
Yeah. She heard me talking and said, he doesn't know what he's talking about, I better go.
I get, you know, I have the boss over there that says, hey, you might wanna walk across the street. I didn't.
Amy? I thought you were the boss.
I know. I didn't hear all the comments, but, uh, we were kinda waiting for today, we haven't done a lot. Um, I can tell you, we're all super excited, Waylon and Tony have been doing some talking and I think the partnership's gonna be amazing. I think we're gonna save, um, the county some money, get back to where Waylon's position was, part-time community service, um, part-time probation. Just informally, we had some kids up there last Friday, they absolutely loved it. They would love pulling weeds and mowing grass versus picking up, you know, stuff on the side of the road. It's gonna teach them skills, um, our brains are working about, you know, we wanna take some veteran, I mean, we're, we're just dreaming big. We want some veterans and some kids to go up to Lobster Creek and them to teach the kids how to gold pan and, um, we have some good stuff to come out of all this. So I think now that we have the approval to move forward, um, we'll have some good things to present to everybody. I think it'll save money and I think, um, I think it's a win, it's a win-win for, for everybody. I think it'll be wonderful for veterans and save money and it's good, it's good for the kids, so, um, we will, yep, meeting with finance, meeting with Penny. Penny's done an amazing job at, you know, she is just organized and everything's down and she's got a manual and she's very willing to help make it very smooth, um, slow and accurate, so, yeah, so I think we're, we're super excited.
Good work.
Clerk? No cold water here, but I will, the two million dollars down that we learned, uh, early December.
Yeah.
I, I won't rule out, still taking a serious look at some point, selling Lobster Creek if we get backed in a corner. I'm certainly not promoting that and I know.
Good.
You have a history, I know.
Oops.
Wendy has a huge history there.
That might be the toughest decision that, that I would ever be faced with here, but, um, again, I know you have a history that goes way back and the work you did there and it is a absolute fabulous place. And I, I just wanna reemphasize, you have kids on one side, veterans on the other. I mean, this is, this has been a long time coming, but what better combination could we possibly have, so?
And, and.
Thank you.
Step one is the four of us going to Voice Cope and just saying, you know, what needs, needs to be done, what do we want done and making a list there. And then step two is headed up to Lobster Creek, doing the same thing, doing a tour, what has to be done, what do we want to do, um, and, and doing it there and then, and just breaking it down, but nothing, we're not, we're not jumping, um, we're not in a crisis here, uh, you know, things are going. I'm gonna take my camp trailer up and stay up there and see what it's all about and, and we'll do it nice and slow, but, um, Tony and Waylon are gonna be, are gonna be the main guys and they've got some really good ideas. They're both very talented, they can take on projects, so I think, I think you're gonna see some really good things from them, I'm excited.
I agree.
One, one record, you're next. I just wanna say, I hope you won't let much grass grow under your feet, you and Tony on the, um, state's offer on South County and that big park down there on the state line, they've offered.
I, well, and I think the original, like I said, we, we haven't done much, cause all of us, Tony and I have been sitting there going like, well, we, we, we don't know, maybe, maybe not, but I think what we really wanna do is encourage Tony to run, I mean, support, but South County's gonna kinda maybe be a veterans thing, they're down there, he's got great ideas, so.
Perfect room on that for that, too.
Yes, yep.
Perfect place.
Like I said, it, we're busting with excitement, we just wanted to make sure that we, we did it right and we haven't really had a lot of serious discussions, cause we, we, we really[1612.41] of serious discussions, 'cause we, we, we really weren't sure, but, um, no, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of good opportunities, um, a lot of good opportunities, so yes.
So, if I may?
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I've, I've pretty much, how do I phrase this? Um, I didn't wanna go for a vague part with, with, you know, the past circumstances, but it, it's, uh, it's wide open now. And so, when you're ready, when you and your staff are ready, and you wanna pursue that with Oregon State Parks, uh, with the, the, the groundwork has been laid, and, uh, I think we're gonna be in real good shape, subject to your approval and timing. The second thing I have is, uh, you know, cell phones don't work at Lobster Creek, so if you, could we budget for a satellite phone for emergencies?
Yeah.
Have you thought of that already?
I would think so. I mean, if there was a phone in Lobster Creek, I'd be the host. Um, but, I haven't shared it with my husband yet, but, I, I mean, I'd live in Lobster Creek. Um, yeah, I think there's, I think there's a lot of things. I mean, for me, you know, we gotta take care of the two we have right now, and then a plan to move forward, and I don't think it's gonna take much. I mean, VoiceCope is just, i- it's amazing, you know, it's, it's just, it's ready to go, and let's check out Lobster, and I think Tony's plan, South County, I, I think we have so much potential, but I, safety reasons, we've had that conversation also. I know we've went up there with search and rescue and done some of our trainings there before, and, and we've got the radio, we brought our emergency truck up, and we were able to, you know, communicate through radio, so I know the possibilities there, but agreed, having to drive to the top of the road if something happens, especially if you're the only one there.
It's amazing you have cell coverage there.
Yeah, it's, well, it's one little spot. I mean, you kinda stand on one leg and hold it just right, and you have cell phone service, but, yeah, so, and, and, and we're open, I mean, you know, sharing information, um, anybody else's thoughts or ideas, we're, we're totally open, but I think you're gonna see some amazing things from those two men.
Well, bringing these two departments together answered a question way back a couple months ago as far as safety. So, but now we have, you know, 'cause we have, before we had a Parks Director who, if he's by himself, was at Lobster by himself, which is, it's, it's sketchy, so that, that answers that question. And we gotta remember that we haven't had a Parks Director. He was out, you know, injured since June, so there's a lot of deferred maintenance at Lobster that needs to be done, and it'll, it's gonna get done, and I'm excited, and got two great departments, and so...
Yeah, and, you know, we, it, it's weird how things happen, 'cause before COVID hit, we were talking about in the parking lot of the veterans down in Brookings, we wanted to have a cornhole tournament with the veterans and the youth, and have a little hot dogs. Well, COVID hit, and we never got to do that, so it's like, well, everything maybe happens for a reason, because it is a great partnership. Um, you know, Tony's sharing that, you know, there, there's a lot that they can teach the youth and then respect the youth can have for the veterans, so, um, it's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
Agree.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks for your leadership and diving in the pool for us.
You bet, Jack.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Pass?
I don't have a lot. I, I'm just, uh, I wanna say that I'm pleasantly, um, surprised and a little taken back by the amount of response that a postcard, a simple postcard, put into this county, and it, it, it brought forward, um, the people of this county to speak. And, and that's a great thing for us. It's a great thing for democracy. That's what this nation was founded on, is, you know, a, a pure democ- democracy with transparency and not having a lot of government involved, but having your government do the people's will. And that was overwhelmingly a no on this homeless center. Now, do I empathize with people that are, have, are homeless and have had problems? Yes. Most of this county doesn't know in 1998, because of all the medical expenses that I've incurred due to my health problems and, uh, some other issues with a divorce, I went bankrupt and was homeless myself in 1998, I believe it was. And through the helping hand of some friends, uh, within a few months, I was back on my feet, but, uh, I, I understand that it can happen to anyone. There's some people, though, that wanna be homeless, and there's the mental issues, the drug issues. I just, uh, I was taken back by this, this postcard and, and the amount of enthusiasm that it charged this county with, and I will now be looking forward to doing a postcard to enlighten the people of this county about our special districts issues, and hopefully we can get the same kind of response to consolidate some of the special districts. I also do wanna say that on, uh, Monday evening, um, I attended, uh, our Wetterburn Fire District, um, as I'm a member of that board, uh, meeting, and the consolidation from Mr. Krieger, uh, and the other fire districts in this county is moving forward. Uh, what we were told at the Wetterburn Fire District meeting on Wednesday is, it is unanimous with all the fire districts to look to do this, uh, the reconsolidation of those districts, and what that will save the taxpayers of this county. But, um, I believe, as do the fire districts, um, the amount of coverage that it will help, because they will all group together and, and consolidate their service, I think the taxpayers of the county will get a much better service from that as well. So, I applaud them for being the first in the county to step forward in doing that, and hopefully it will be a template for the rest of the districts in this county to look to do the right thing in this county and consolidate some of these districts, and coming soon is a postcard to you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Commissioner Boyce?
Make it quick here. AOC, AOC-C, not a lot going on, you know, the, it's up AOC with the veterans and, uh, department, the, the human services, uh, certainly housing, they're, they've always got a good connection with the other commissioners, and, and I'm just, sometimes those meetings take a full day, uh, every other week. Um, Rogue Siskiyou Regional Fire Training Center, we're having a meeting out there Friday, uh, moving along. Uh, Council Pope and his staff have, and have helped on, uh, the connection with the state on, uh, ratifying, uh, the purchase, the county purchase of the property for that project. Uh, mentioned food security, uh, that's, that's something I, I'm gonna try and get done this spring and just really pull the county together on, you know, with the food co-ops, with, uh, kids learn how to grow vegetables, uh, all the above. There's just so much that we can do. We have, we have good, you know, an adequate growing season here in Curry County, depending on the, the coast, um, and so I, I think that's gonna develop a lot of interest in the, some key people that would have a lot to contribute there. Uh, the Oregon Timber Counties Coalition, we had our second meeting, uh, was it Friday? Yeah, just last Friday. Went very well. Glameth County's taken the lead there, and, uh, that's, uh, with, uh, Lynn County, uh, Jackson Josephine, uh, Coos, um, no, Coos is not involved, I'm sorry, and of course, Douglas County. So, some good things happening there. We, uh, we have a good lobbyist that's in, that we've already put, uh, to good work, um, in DC, and I'll have more to report on that later. Um, I always wanna mention USDA especially, but I did earlier today mention the foundations on grant opportunities. We, we just, uh, we wanna, we wanna lead the darn state in, in, in how we can, and not just get government money. I think that was somewhat, uh, addressed today, you know, that there are strings attached. I understand that, but if we don't pursue and compete for those funds, then it goes to other areas. Um, I think we need to be obviously, uh, precise and, uh, disciplined on, on what the strings are to getting those grants, but the more I learn about the foundations just within the state of Oregon, and what I missed today, of course, is the Ford Family Foundation. Jay on the courthouse, I'm, I'm having a meeting or two a day or a week, excuse me, on progress there. Um, you know, we, you heard $100 million, okay? Uh, the cost of construction is absolutely, uh, going out of sight, uh, but that's already, we've already figured a way to bring that down to 90 million. Now, maybe that's not much of a, much of a, a, a figure to, to boast about, but we are doing everything we can to refine that and be as real as we can, and see if there really is an opportunity to, uh, bring that before the voters, and then, of course, competing for 50% grants with the state of Oregon. Um, on this, this afternoon of the ARP, uh, funds that we're gonna discuss, I, I still, maybe you, maybe the other commissioners too, but I still don't have a clear picture of what we've spent or obligated to date. I think there's about six, seven, eight things, and, and, and with Mr. Ricker being out, um, I, uh, I, I wrote him, and not realizing he wouldn't be here today. Anyway, I need that info, I think we need that information, and we need to know exactly what we have left in the funds that, that, that are available. Mr. Chair, other than, oh, AOC working on water still, and in a general sense to all the counties, so I'll be bringing that back for the board again. Uh, you saw, we got, uh, quite an article in the Pilot, uh, there was a two-to-one vote in opposition to the 25,000 for AOC, so I hope that's just temporary. I think I made a good case, and, and then the meeting prior to that with Andy Smith and, and, uh, the contract person, um, Harmony Bright, Harmony Bright, uh, the, the presentation that they gave, so I, I can't stress enough how I think, how important I think that is to, to keep, um, to keep pursuing. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we're three minutes to noon. Could we maybe do 10A and B, the new hire orders, and then break, and then come back at 1 for...
I think we need to have Julie come in for executive session to talk about those before we can vote on them.
Okay, so we're gonna just break right now till 1?
About an hour and 15 minutes. Whoop.
Yeah.
I gotta lunch meeting, I really need to go.
No, just, just to go in and then break.
Excuse me. Should've listened better.
I agree. I think that's, that's a good call. So, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna go into executive session, and we'll, thank you for coming to the prior meeting, and we'll take a break and be back here at 1 or 1:15?
Oh, and we have Sam Baugh in the audience. Thank you, Mr. Baugh, for attending.
1 o'clock.
1 o'clock or 1:15, gentlemen?
1 o'clock.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think we're good. Okay, 1:15.
What time is our work?
2. All right, hey, welcome back.